Good evening and welcome to the special town council meeting of Wednesday, December 20. It is 7:10 and we are here in council chambers. Although it is not on the agenda, I would ask that we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rule call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Okay, we are here, big crowd, thank you for being here.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mister, Counselor DePietro.
Madam Chair, I'd argue that based on Robert's Rules 11th Edition, that the agenda for this meeting is out of order. And I would cite under main motions that are not in order. No. Main motion is an order that presents substantially the same question as a motion that was finally disposed of earlier in the same session by being rejected, postponed indefinitely, or subjected to an objection to the consideration of a question that was sustained. It's my argument that as of last Monday's meeting, that fits under this criteria. I would further cite Home Rule Charter 252, that the agenda for such meeting shall be determined by the Chair. Madam Chair, as this is your agenda, I believe this puts you in violation.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro. Technically, this, it should have been gone through me, but the agenda was posted without being gone through me. And the agenda, it was asked by the councilors to have a special meeting in regard to discussion of the Waterside Park. And on Monday, I would agree with you that we had disposed of, twice, we had disposed of this particular item. And I continuously made note that there was no significant difference. We were creating a park, accepting land, and appropriating money, just from a different source of income, source of revenue, excuse me. And at that time, I believed that the motion was out of order. We're here this evening out of respect to the fact that the, that the meeting was called. I would agree with you that this motion is out of order, and therefore, is not relevant to these proceedings. So...
If I could further, Madam Chair, are you planning a vote this evening? That would certainly put this out of order.
This motion is out of order to vote on. It is substantially the same as the previous motions that we have voted on, and that we rescinded on Monday night, or tried to rescind, and that failed as well. So, this motion is out of order. That is my ruling, Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So unless there's something else to add, that is my ruling.
Can I, can I ask a question? Are you, are you now ruling that this agenda item is out of order?
I am.
Is this what you're ruling in front of the most people that I've ever seen at a council meeting? Even though several councilors, at least one, voted not to rescind in order to speak tonight, because he felt that, I'm assuming, through the, the ongoings of the night, on Monday night, that he wanted, he voted no to his own rescension, and he stated in public session that the reason was because he wanted to wait until tonight. So, I think that you're wrong, that we voted this down twice. We voted, the council has voted a motion that starts similar to this down on two Mondays ago, and we voted down a rescension on Monday night, so I would like to make that clear. I'd also like to say that, as far as precedent goes, in June of 2015, we had a meeting about a leachate treatment facility. That was voted down by council, and then, because the proposal had changed in such a significant way, in such an impactful way, in July 20, or July 27, we had a council of the whole meeting to revisit that. And as I recall, Madam Chair, at that time, you were fully in support of bringing back up the discussion for that leachate treatment facility. My argument is that with this appropriation, we are now talking about a proposal that's significantly and very different from the original proposal, with the, the suggestion that there might be ongoing maintenance, and also, obviously, the funding mechanism of this, which I think is probably the most important part of the motion at all. So if you are now ruling that my, this meeting and this motion is out of order, then I would make a motion to appeal from the decision of the Chair for this ruling. And I'll be looking for a second on that, thank you.[353.02][353.02](applause)
So we have a motion and a second to appeal the decision of the Chair, and we will take a vote on that.
Is there any discussion?
We have some discussion.
We could have discussion.
Would you like to have discussion?
I would.
Counselor Carrasco.
Whatever turns out to be tonight is up to us as the aidless that are here, but I truly think it's prudent that we honor the citizens that have come up, from both sides. I put a petition out there today, whatever side you are on this issue, come out and speak, let us hear your opinion. Because receiving emails, texts, phone calls, whatever, it's, it's great, but it's good to put a face to who's saying things. So, and also, understanding that Chip Norton is also in the audience, and I would like to hear from him and his company in regards to some of the questions that some of these us councilors have had in regards to this specific project. So I would hope that, you know, this council would really consider honoring the citizens that come out. I mean, we have a roomful, and I wish, I hope the camera can look and show the public that is watching, that it is a packed house here tonight. And it's not for a police appointment, not for a firefight appointment, this is for something that is going to impact our community, whether you're for it or against it. So I would hope that, you know, we can have this discussion tonight.[465.25][465.25](applause)
Counselor Steves, on which go. Please, we need to finish, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'm actually inclined to agree with Counselor Carrasco on this one. I, I said I am inclined to agree with Counselor Carrasco on this one, because, I mean, I don't think, I still have very serious issues with this proposal as it's drafted, as in front of us tonight, but I am certainly willing to see what people say.
And Counselor DePietro.
Madam Chair, the, the motion I made actually has nothing to do with this particular agenda item. I believe if we do have a vote this evening, it's going to start a very dangerous and scary precedent. And if there is a question of precedent, as Counselor O'Clair brought up, we have former councilors that I'm sure would, would help with the Chair's decision on this motion.
Well, there's an appeal going on right now, so it wasn't a, it was not a, I'm not here to give you another determination. Right now, it's whether or not that particular point of order can be appealed. And so this council has parliamentary rights to process that and decide whether my decision was correct in terms of that particular question which I ruled on. If there's another question in regard to the agenda or anything on it, then you can make another point of order at some point. But right now, we're dealing with the appeal process, so I cannot make another ruling on it. We are in the process of deliberation in regard to the appeal.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there, oh, we lost one. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I agree with the appeal, thank you for making that motion, and I think that our community definitely could benefit from a recovery from that embarrassment that occurred Monday night. So this needs to happen, right now.[610.16][610.16](applause) Thank you.
Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I do agree that this is out of order, and I would agree with you on that. However, these people did come out to discuss this, would they be able to discuss it? I mean, without us voting on this? Because I believe this is out of order, this agenda item, so...
Well, on that respect, as I said, we entertain for the public whatever council is interested in. The original agenda should have gone through me, and it would have been discussion of the Waterside Park, but that's not what happened. And here we are, tonight, dealing with this issue, with this item. So, but first on first, we're, we're looking on the appeal of the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else on the appeal of the Chair? Counselor O'Clair.
Just as a comment to something that you just stated, again, as I stated Monday night, I did try to go through you for this agenda item. It's my intention to work together for the good of the community, seeing as how you were unopen to allowing this to be discussed, this is why myself, Counselor Carrasco, and Counselor Nash asked for a special meeting, thank you.
Anyone else on the appeal of the, of the Chair's ruling? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote on the appeal of the Chair.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. If you vote to, if you vote yes to, the motion is to appeal, so if you vote for that, then when the yeas, that means my, I will be overruled, and we will move forward, and the agenda item still remains. And then we'll go from there, after the vote.
So just to be clear, so, just so everybody is aware, the yeas vote would allow this to go forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion was to appeal the, the, appeal the ruling of the Chair.
Right.
So if you vote yes, you are, you agree with the motion to appeal the ruling of the Chair. Okay?
So if the motion passes, then we will continue on with the meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ready? Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
No.
Counselor DePietro.
No.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
No.
Five yes, three no.[777.44][777.44](applause)
Look, I know you're all excited, and I can appreciate that, but I'm going to set some rules up that aren't mine, but are rules that are voted in by this council. And I'm going to read some of them right now, because we, if we're going to get through this, if you're going to have your say, then we need to move, you know, it's that clapping at 300 people speaking, then we'll never get through it. So if you want to be heard, then we need to move the process. So I just want to let you know, council's, Rule Number 10, Duties of the Chair. The Chair of the Council shall take the chair and announce the meeting, which we've done. Rule Number 11, The Chair of the Council shall preserve order and decorum and may speak to points in order, of order in preference to other members, and shall decide all questions. That's what we just did. Rule 12, The Chairman of the Council may at any time during debate or otherwise declare recess, which could happen. And Rule 13, Every member shall respectfully address the Chair, confining himself or herself to the questions under debate and avoiding personalities. No member shall speak out of his or her place without leave of the Chairman, nor shall any member be interrupted by another while speaking, except by a call to order. Rule 14, Any member mentioned in debate by another shall address, be addressed by his or her name and title, Counselor. Rule 15, When two or more members shall address the Chair at the same time, the Chairman shall name the member who is entitled to the floor. And that's pretty much it, except for seating of the council. Now, I will elaborate that we follow Robert's Rules of Order, and it's pretty much verbatim, what's on there is in here, but a lot more pages. And we can read more, but I don't think we need to. I think the point is made, that let's just move the process along and listen to everybody who has something to say.[897.23][897.23](applause) Again, a little respect, and so we will expect respect for this council and their time, as we will give you for yours at the podium.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask everyone in this room to please, please show respect to the council, show respect to one another, and show respect to the people who are speaking. And if we do this, it should be a brief, a relatively brief meeting, done with kindness and respect. This is important, please understand it, thank you.
Counselor DePietro, you have anything else?
Madam Chair, I hope that the will of the people with the water park and every other agenda item that hits this strong is recognized, and I hope for success in that, always. But as it is my opinion, and it is in the book that I wasted $6.95 on, I believe this meeting to be illegal. It is against the oath of office that I took, and I am not going to participate in this meeting, based on the oath that I took, Madam Chair. And I thank you very much, and I wish success with this one agenda item, and its protocol that is the issue here, not this agenda item, I assure you. And I thank you very much, I wish you all a good evening.
Counselor DePietro, might I say that I personally have no intention on voting this evening? And I would encourage that while we are here to listen, that we all consider that option at some point, because we have voted on this, and the majority has spoken on this, so...
So Madam Chair, are you planning a vote this evening?
I'm just saying, I'm not planning on voting myself, sir. I am not planning on voting myself, sir. Okay? So let's move on. We have an agenda item. Actually, it hasn't been read, we haven't moved forward. So, agenda item, the only one on the agenda, which I believe is dilatory and is a repeat, is vote to approve the park grant for the purchase and developing for recreational purposes of certain property known as Lot 2A as follows. That $335,674 is appropriated to purchase and develop for recreation purposes by negotiated purchase or otherwise of certain property known as Lot 2A, consisting of 1.3 acres, more or less, as shown on plan titled Plan of the Land of Southbridge, Mass., made by Sherman &amp; Frederick LLC dated 7/10/2017, that said land be conveyed to Southbridge under the provisions Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 45, Section 3, and as it may be hereafter, be amended in other Massachusetts statutes relating to recreation, to be managed and controlled by the Department of Public Works of Southbridge, maintained by Southbridge Associates II LLC, once completed, and the Town Manager be authorized to file on behalf of Southbridge any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts deemed necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act 301 CMR 5.00, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article, and the Town of Southbridge and the Town Manager's Office be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any constructing a Riverside Park. That to meet this appropriation, $100,000 was previously appropriated in account number 6448, Waterside Park Matching Grant Funds on June 6, 2016. Agenda item number 18, and the Town Council votes to appropriate $235,674 from number 6790, landfill royalties account, to fund the remaining amount of this project. The monies will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the grant funds are received by the town.
So move. Second.
And that's where we're at. So does any counselor want to speak, or should we just let the people speak tonight? I think we've spoken enough, maybe. Except for Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I appreciate hearing my name several times when I witnessed that horrific YouTube video today, but I do appreciate that we did have discussion on this matter, quite lengthy, fantastic, but at the end of the day, I certainly hope I never have to be part of anything that was so dramatic.
Could, could we just keep it to tonight, sir?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to defend myself, too. This needs to be discussed at length. I'm not going to say anything more about this, because we have a great audience. I have been more than satisfied with what I've seen from the Town Manager, in response to every question that's been asked. So I'm a little bit disappointed that any counselor up here would say that they would not be willing to issue a vote, or wants to walk out, because I make the same amount of time as everybody else up here, to come and do the work for the community. So, let's be respectful, I agree with you there. Thank you.[1219.83][1219.83](applause)
So, does anybody want to speak to this, this agenda item? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and on agenda items, you get three minutes.
Good evening, Town Council, Chairwoman Clements, Town Manager San Angelo. My name is Stephanie DiMartino. I reside at 92 Harrington Street in Southbridge. The argument regarding a Riverside Park is very contentious, but it doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be. You have a majority up on the days that has made it clear that Southbridge should not have a Riverside Park, that we should not compare ourselves to Putnam. But didn't the council go and visit a business park in New Bedford several years ago to get information on how to create a successful business park in Southbridge? New Bedford borders Buzzards Bay and has a population of 95,000. Southbridge is nowhere near New Bedford in terms of size, in terms of revenue, yet that's the city the council chose to get ideas from. The council went together and asked questions to understand how the city of New Bedford's industrial economy worked, to bring info back to the town and implement it in Southbridge. Well, we have one business up on the land that is the industrial park. This is the industrial park that back in 2009, a group of people wore shorts, shirts in support of the access road, and came up to the podium and said, "Build the road and business will come." Their show of support for the access road swayed some councilors who were going to vote no, to vote yes, and in doing so, a commercial road was built, Casella was able to have more MSW trucks deliver MSW to the landfill, and one business was opened at the industrial park. Town Manager San Angelo visited the town of Putnam because there are many, many aspects that Southbridge and Putnam have in common, is not far from Southbridge, they're also a mill town, and they're also along the Quinnipiac River. Putnam may have less residents than Southbridge, but every year, people visit the town of Putnam for the water fire events and the 4th of July fireworks, and in doing so, the foot traffic has increased, the local businesses see an increase in business, and the town's revenue has increased. Town Manager San Angelo was right in visiting Putnam to glean ideas of how to improve the economic development for Southbridge, so why is he being berated for his hard work? What is the vision? Is it having homeowners continually foot the bill for the town's revenue with higher taxes each year? Having a Riverside Park, whatever its size, creates opportunities for local businesses, for residents, for visitors. Do you remember when the town common was only a common, without the gazebo, without the benches, without the landscaping, without the artwork, without the police department, without the parking lot? How often was the common used? Not much. But since the improvements have been made to the common, it is being used throughout the year for social events, weddings, prom pictures, private events, public events, Christmas, et cetera, et cetera. I've walked Westville, West Street, and the entire town for the better part of my life. This town is a walking town. It has great architecture, good people, great traditions, and lasting memories. Could it be better? Of course it can. There's always room for improvement. You can incorporate the rail trail that was supposed to go throughout the town to be included with this venture when describing the town to prospective developers and selling the town. These are pluses, not minuses. Expand on that.
Excuse me, are you almost finished? I hate to interrupt, but I'm just going by the time, so...
One more, one more paragraph.
Did she get five? No, she gets another two.
Hold those in favor. Two minutes.
Let's all do what we can to improve on this town and stop this bickering. Maybe this wasn't your idea, but it's still a great idea. Commend the person who came up with the idea and work together now to bring it to fruition. Don't make any more excuses, or cast blame, or vote no simply out of spite. The location next to the hotel is the best location because it is at the heart of the Rotary, one of the entrances to the town, across from the common, near local businesses. The police station is nearby, and it has a huge parking lot also nearby. It's within walking distance of Main Street also. The parades all walk down Main Street to the common. Adding a park to enjoy the river and the natural aesthetics of the scenery year round is beneficial to health and well-being. I remember when this town flourished, and I believe this town can flourish again, but it will take the community together as a whole to make that happen, and a proactive, positive council, working cohesively as a team with the community, with the small businesses, with the Town Manager, with each other. Thank you.[1516.71][1516.71](applause)
If we could just let the speakers talk, it would be much easier for us up here to hear, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Marketti, Southbridge resident. I don't know if this will have any effect tonight, but I'm just going to repeat what I said Monday night. I think the park is a good idea, I think it's a great location, it's a safe location. Some of the other areas that have been mentioned are, seem to me, a little remote, and the park is near the police department. Will it help the hotel? Yes, I think it'll help the hotel, and we want to help the hotel, we want to fill that hotel, we want tourists to come here, it's a good area to hang out. Do we need money for roads? We need money for roads, but I think that's going to take a lot more than $100,000, that's probably going to be something that, a capital improvement bond or something is going to have to be done for that. I know that in 2010, Christopher Clark got $4 million to improve the roads, and he, he spent it all on one road, Woodstock Hill, so, or Woodstock Road, so, some of the money that we need should be done by the bonding way, and not, this $100,000 isn't going to cover all that. So I just think the, the, the park is a good idea, and I, and I hope that you change your mind on it. And before I sit down, I just wanted to say one thing, as long as we're going to go by rules, according to the town's Home Rule Charter, the Town Manager has a right to speak at these Town Council meetings. So I would appreciate it if the Council Chair would stop being rude to the Town Manager, and if he wants to speak, let him speak. I don't always agree with the Town Manager, but I do agree he has a right to speak, and that's according to our Home Rule Charter, so thank you very much.[1635.91][1635.91](applause)
Good evening, Council. Ryan Servant, 40 Hillside Road. I'll do my best not to call you knuckleheads, like I did two days ago. First of all, Chair, I, I don't understand why you want to hurry this along. Are you, I don't know if you have something to do, you don't want to let us talk, you don't want to let us clap, but it's fine. If you're just going to call a recess as soon as we're done speaking, so you don't have the cojones to vote, then just call it now. Because obviously, reading your rules at the beginning of this presentation, saying that you're, you have the power to call a recess, and you might do that, means that's how you're not going to vote. So rather than saying you're not going to vote, let's go ahead and have the gumption to vote. Don't just phone it in these next few months before you get to give up your position. Please do a vote.
Could you speak to the agenda item, please, sir?
Yes, I want you to vote on this agenda item. I don't want you to call a recess on this agenda item. Counselor DePietro, if you want the $7 back for the book, I gladly pay you back to read the rules of the...
Sir, sir, to the agenda item, please.
This is going to be fantastic for our town, we don't have an opportunity to be able to spend $100,000 and get $300,000 worth of work on this agenda item. And so what we need to realize is that we won't have another opportunity like this. So we have to take this opportunity, I hope we can take this opportunity, and we've heard some discussion that the land isn't very nice, and it's yucky, and it's dirty. That's what the money's for, to make it nice, to make the landscaping work, to make it a nice workway, a walkway. So when I hear it's a reverse lollipop, it is, which is why there's money involved to make it nice for us, the residents. I also second the motion of that citizen who just spoke, please be respectful of our Town Manager.
Jacqueline Ryan, 275 Marcy Street. I'm just going to reiterate the comments I made Monday night. Couple weeks ago, I sat on as a member of the General Government Subcommittee when this proposal came in front of us. The Subcommittee recommended 40 Nothing to reject this proposal at the time, and then the Town Council followed suit, in a 5 to 4 decision. I did so at the time because I had a length of concerns ranging from fiscal issues, to contingencies, to environmental and safety concerns. After that rejection, the Town Manager, and Chip Norton, and many of the parties involved, sat down and came up with a better deal for Southbridge. And that's why I'm here today, telling again, that I have switched my vote on this, and I urge this town to accept this proposal. Not only has it addressed all of the concerns... Not only has it addressed all of the concerns I laid out, right, it has now put forth, it has answered the concern of maintenance, with Chip Norton now saying publicly that he will pay indefinitely for the maintenance of this park. I've also heard from citizens and children and so many others about this, and it moved me. And I think it's important for all of us as elected and appointed leaders to listen to our constituents, whether or not we agree with them, and let them speak and reflect on that, and if details and proposals change, which this one has significantly changed, to reevaluate. And again, I would urge you to vote yes on this proposal tonight.
Demetri Kasperson, 51 North Street, Southbridge. I'm here for the second time on this issue. When I was here the last time, I tried to draw the comparison with Putnam, and also having attended college in Providence, Rhode Island, which I think was one of the originators of the idea of the water fires, that you have the potential here, not just for a place that's magnificent for this community, where you could have things like outdoor theater. And I'd like to just, on that note, you know, mention to people that don't realize this, that Gateway Theater in this town lost their facility this year. They lost their barn. And with minimal cost, you could provide a place for Gateway to perform three seasons out of the year, plays out in the open, when everyone coming in from out of the community would drive by and see that we have this type of culture going on in our town. This is better than what Putnam has to offer, this particular location. This is a location that would provide access to not just a moving river, but a standing pond area where you could potentially, with Steve Roenfeld, introduce things like paddle boats, canoes, gondolas. From an artistic and a creative standpoint, there's no limits to this, not just in terms of cultural opportunity, but economic opportunity. And I try to point on that as well, for the local businesses of this town, to vote this down, this is, you're basically saying, "I don't want 250, $300,000." That's what you're saying, to give this community something that it can be proud of. And to do that so callously is basically saying, "I don't care about you. I don't care about the mandate that was created in the master plan process," where this was the first thing on the agenda, was to give river access to the people of this town. And beyond all these other things, you're anti-small business if you do this. To support this park is to be pro-small business, is to let this community flourish in a way and become Putnam, become Northampton, open its gates to the rest of the state and the rest of this country. We were once, in the late 1970s, America's Town. We were voted America's Town, and we declined after that, after the loss of our industry. And I'm imploring you to please see the value of this for the community, for the culture, and for the small businesses of this town. To vote this down, you're killing all those.
Are you all set, Mr. Kasperson? Thank you.
My name is Dick Whitney. I'm from Southbridge, and first of all, I agree that we all deserve respect, and I'm really dismayed at the division that I thought after Casella leaving or going away would change, and it hasn't. And that, more than anything, that's still what this is all about, which is too bad. But in any case, I have, I am one of the few people that have thought about the utilization of that area most of my life, and I know that area well. I have plans and thoughts that I'd like to continue to explore with Chip and others and the government and so forth, because I still have great vision. And water fires, one of them we've talked about for 10 years. Putnam, we brought, you know, this is not new. What Putnam has is what we are developing, is a strong business partnership. And I encourage, and I'm a little dismayed by so many people that are talking about this is life or death, but you know, it takes work. It's not one project. This one project, I would love nothing more than to see expansion on that area, and it can happen. I know, I remember seeing plans for the pond where the lights on the spray, those should be renovated, we could have water fires there. Whether we have that access or not is academic. We can still, if we can work with Chip and others and the town and the state, we can do things there, but you know what? It takes work. And the partnership, which I would encourage you to get involved in, is the bright light, in my opinion. Southbridge Business Partnership is making a difference. That's what made Putnam. It's not, we have great resources, and you know what? I'm so proud of Southbridge because I see what you don't. I brought people from around the world here in September, 10 countries, from China, Australia, Japan, they all came to Southbridge to the hotel, which was, by the way, bustling really well. How many of you had gone into the hotel and eaten at the bar? How many of you have come to the museum? You know, I want support, we want support for local business. Have you gone to Styles? Have you frequented the local restaurants? It's not gonna be one project. So, well, I would love nothing more than to see it. Respect people that, you know, the easy decision is, sure, let's just spend the money. I don't know, I haven't studied it, but you know, the reason we have a council is they study it, and if it's turned down, you know, maybe we'll develop something down the road. But this division, I'm so dismayed to see, and I don't even watch the meetings anymore because I'm disgusted at the division. The only reason, the only thing stopping us from getting together is if this is voted down, forget the personalities, come work on something, go frequent something, you know, do it, but don't criticize the person, whoever they are, on either side. Let's just stop this, we've gotta get over it. That's what's holding us back. We're our own worst enemy. And so, let's just, again, I have great ideas and great concepts and thoughts about what we could do in the AO complex.
Mr. Whitney, do you need two minutes?
No, it's just, let's work together. I would, I want to come back in the new year, and I have proposals on expansion that I'd like to discuss on developing business, but come to the partnership is my message because I think that's where the excitement is.
Okay, Mr. Whitney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Far, 138 Mechanic Street. This is actually, first time here for myself, and one thing I thought about when I first heard about the, about the rubber access, is that I personally, being a Southbridge native, born and raised here, I thought it actually would be a great idea. Now, forget about Putnam, forget about Northampton, because they are their own towns, but we need to be our own too. I feel that Southbridge has been, I just feel that Southbridge in some ways has been on a decline, and made me almost, makes me barely want to hang around certain areas, obviously, but with our side, I feel that with this, possibilities could open up to greater things. It could allow different after-school programs to be constructed, and gives more students, more kids, more opportunities. Who knows? We may have skipped over generations of musicians, of actors, anything like that, any people like that, photographers too, because I myself am an amateur photographer. I love taking pictures, and I've seen different areas of Southbridge, and where parts of me just so badly wants to just get into work and help this town whichever way I can. And I do believe that with the right work and the right methods, things, especially the land that's considered to be not really good, can come back to life. Especially, one thing learning from my own life experiences, is sometimes the most beautiful things comes after a destructive ugliness. And that's just how I feel. I feel it can open up so many things, positive things, especially since it's near a police station especially. But not only that, we can, you never know, we might actually see something really positive. Thank you for your time.
Larry Spinelli, 258 Lebanon Hill Road, Southbridge, Mass. I guess if people don't know, I'm a member of the Southbridge Planning Board and a former town councillor, a member of the planning board for 34 years. I came here tonight to speak against the park. But I don't think that's the appropriate thing. I think more thought, more study has to be done before a park moves forward. I walked along the property, and I look at the property, and I say, "Boy, you know, we're gonna need, we're gonna need the state involved with it, the D E P, we're gonna need to be doing work along the riverfront, we're gonna need all kinds of permits, and right now, we're being asked, or you as town councillors are being asked to appropriate funds." Now, you're saying it's not gonna cost us anything. When you take $235,000 and you take it out of the landfill account and transfer it to something else, those account, that money is costing us something else that we're giving up. And over the last year, the town council has been asked to give up lots of things. You took money from the schools, you did all kinds of things, and those are necessary actions that need to be done in an ongoing business or an ongoing town. Unfortunately, I've been on the board so long that, I was a member of the planning board when the initial Southbridge Conference Center, the project, was signed off. My name is on that definitive plan. And that definitive plan, as it was presented by Chip Norton and Franklin Realty Trust, or whatever the corporate name was at the time, had definite parts to the plan, and that plan has not been fulfilled. The parking lot behind the Southbridge Police Station was supposed to be re-landscaped, repaved, put away, it's never been done. Now, I know the argument is gonna be presented that, "Well, you know, the D O D didn't bring in the number of people, they didn't need the parking." That's all fine, well and good. When the hotel conference, the complex itself of the hotel was, there were supposed to be six decorative street lamps on that side. They've never been installed. My being upset about that is simply this. Now we have a proposal to have Mr. Norton, and he's gonna take over the cost of maintaining the park afterwards. Well, there were things that should have been done in the original proposal and haven't been done, and now we're here, 17, 18 years later, and they haven't been done.
Two more minutes, Mr. Spinelli.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Second. All in favor? Go ahead.
So, I'm not saying Mr. Norton is not an honorable man, he doesn't, I'm not saying he doesn't have integrity, I'm just saying, these things, maybe they slipped by. I certainly brought them up to enough town managers before. I have not brought them up to Mr. San Angelo because I gave up on the whole idea. It's too late to do anything about it now even. But to me, it's a reflection of what happens, and it happens too often in this town, where we don't enforce what is being contracted between the town and a developer. And now Mr. Norton wants to come forward, and he wants to take part of the casade, and he wants to turn it into affordable housing or whatever. So, Mr. Norton is gonna gain tremendously by this proposed park if it goes forward for the look. There were no stipulations when the planning board approved it, but there was a gentleman agreement, because I remember this. Mr. Norton said he was gonna maintain the fencing along the way, that it was gonna be, not be an embarrassment, and it's turned out to be a terrible embarrassment. And I just feel that before the town allocates money or approves this park, that somebody, somebody should sit down and study it and make sure that what is being committed is gonna be carried out. Because I feel, and I'm only speaking for myself, that things have not gone forward as they should, and we don't seem to hold people responsible for it. We all need to work together to make Southbridge a better place. I'm a life, other than four years in college, I'm a lifelong resident here, property owner. All my kids graduated from high school, they all went to college, they're all married. Three kids live here in town, one of them's a schoolteacher. My kids are involved, and so am I. 34 years, I think I've stated my case for being involved with the town. We need to take our time to do this. That's all that I ask of you. Do not vote on this tonight, please. Research it and do your homework on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli.
My name is Francisco Rodriguez. I grew up here all my life. I went to Wells Junior High School, graduated from Southbridge High at Dresser Street. I've been in Providence for the past 20 years, before we even had the water fires. The first thing that we all complained about living in town was the traffic. We were like, "These people, get them out of here, we can't." But it's done a lot for the city. The city is doing very well, it's improved a lot, it's making a lot of money, all the vendors are making money. What you need to do is approve the project, but also incorporate it with other events. Like we have the, our biggest event is the breast awareness, breast cancer awareness. 25,000 people are in Providence. The city is this big. The city of Providence is smaller than Southbridge, and we have all those people there. We have all the vendors making money, we have the, the police officers are getting extra shifts, everyone's making money off of it. So, why don't you, like, you know, like, think about it and do something with it? Because basically, what you have is a property, think about it as a three-story apartment house that you own, and you're not renting any units. So, you have the property there, you're gonna be paying taxes on it, but it's not making you any income. You know, and you gotta work with the vendors. We do, we do stuff with RISD, like RISD does, like, they do art shows, and we have like all the vendors from Thayer Street and the East Side. They come in, they have the kiosks, and they sell, you know, they sell food, we have bands, you know, the whole nine yards. It's a, it's a great event. It's, I'm just, I'm just here to just voice my opinion. I'm coming back to Southbridge, I still love my hometown, and I think it'll benefit a lot. I think it'll do a great job. You know, of course, you have to like censor it, you know, but I think we're missing the fact that, you know, growing up or living in Providence all these years, it got to the point where I used to tell people, I was from Sturbridge, because when I said when I was from Southbridge, they were like, "Where's that?" I'm like, "Next to Sturbridge." They're like, "Oh, we know Sturbridge." Well, you can do something with the Brimfield Flea Market in the summer and have, you know, like coordinate an event, and those people will come here, it'll benefit the hotels, they'll stay... And those people will come here, they'll benefit the hotels, they'll stay for maybe even one night. It's better than not having them here at all. And they'll be at the restaurants in the morning, you know, brunch or whatever. Everybody gets together for brunch. That's what family is about. So, you know, I mean, I'm just voicing my opinion. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Councilor McKenzie.
I'm really glad to see some people who I have never heard come up to the podium before and speak their mind about our town. And I would ask, and I would hope that more and more people would do so. Thank you very much for your attendance and for your input.
Okay, are there any other citizens who, are there any other citizens?
Good evening, Council. My name is Elizabeth Stevens. I reside at 8 Hillside Road. I'm also a member of the Southbridge Board of Health. However, I'm not speaking here this evening in that capacity. I'm here solely as a citizen of this community. I just wanna say, I have prepared a statement, however, it's kind of changed throughout the evening listening to others speak. And I, I just would like to say, mainly, I agree with Mr. Spinelli and his comments. My main concern about this park is the environmental aspect of it. And I, I'm concerned that we don't have a study, or the town manager said there was one, however, it has not been furnished for anyone to, to see. And it's also my understanding that it's several decades old. And I'm, I'm fairly certain, as we have all learned from the landfill issues that we have, DEP regulations change on a regular basis and it's quite possible that it may have been perfectly fine 20 years ago, but now it may not be suitable for a park for people to be at. I'm not opposed by any stretch to having a waterfront park, I want you to understand that. However, I feel that this has been rushed and maybe all the i's haven't been dotted and the t's have not been crossed, and that there has not been a suitable amount of research done on this land. I would also like to say that, you know, a lot of people comment that, oh, it's only $100,000, you really can't do anything with $100,000. You can't fix a road with that. And that may very well be true. However, you can buy equipment. And we do want to have central dispatch for our police and fire. That $100,000 could very easily go to fund the equipment for our central dispatch. Which everyone in the town uses. Whether you realize it or not, everyone utilizes the police and the fire department. Not everyone possibly would be utilizing this park. So, thank you, that's all I would like to say.
Thank you. Councilor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'm just, I'm listening to all of these comments and I, I appreciate everybody coming out. A little bit of clarification, I think, on this. Obviously, 18 months ago, we voted to appropriate this money. What we have before us tonight is a motion. And what this motion does is allow us to go for the grant. This is not a done deal. The PNS will come back to council. At that point, I will be right there alongside, you know, the people with reservations and hesitation, trying to make the best deal for Southbridge if this can go through. But this initial step is to satisfy a requirement of the grant in order to apply for it. And I think that we need to, to keep that in mind, that this conversation should be at least a little bit different than the conversation that would be had at the time of the finalized PNS agreement. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to respond to a, a point of clarification on what you're saying, 'cause I do not agree in the aspect, the state has required us to own the land for this grant. And they fully expect, because the town manager told us so in general government, and then again at the last meeting, that the wording of the last proposal had to be the way it was because the state required it. And that the state has walked and is assured that we will buy this land if we get the grant. So, we are obligated to buy this land if we get the grant. So I counter the fact that, yes, there's a PNS, I mean, yes, there's a sale that would have to go through and, and, but we are, in essence, blessing the manager to purchase this land because the state expects us to own the land. The only way we could apply for this grant is when we, if we own land. And they came out and walked that land and were assured that we would own the land because of this $1 agreement with Mr., with Mr. Norton. Which, this council was not discussed in any way, shape, or form before that grant went in. And that, that is a big, a big issue. The grant went in and then we were told the grant went in. And then the state came back and insists that they have a vote by the legal body of this town obligating us to this grant if we earn this grant. If we earn this grant, if they bestow upon us the grant, then we are obligated to move forward with the grant. And that we have put the money aside that will meet the grant requirements. In this name, the $100,000, which you are correct, Councilor Claire, we put aside last year when we weren't quite in the same dire straits we're in now. And again, we're off at a different session, so to re, relook at that would be a little bit difficult. I would certainly propose that that $100,000 not be in the Waterside Park account right now because of what we're facing fiscally. So, if you would like to speak, Mr. Town Manager.
I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna clarify a little bit because some of what you said is, is very accurate and some is not quite accurate. So I wanna just clarify. So, the grant was applied for and we notified the state that, of the particular land, that we did not own it, but it was our intention to acquire the land from Franklin Realty. We had, I had talked to Mr. Norton from Franklin Realty. He, at first, we had some discussion. He wasn't even quite sure he wanted to give it to us, quite frankly, or sell it to us. But we did come to a gentleman, gentleman sort of agreement, or at least Mr. Norton said he'd be willing to donate this particular land for $1. The grant right now has not been approved by the state of Massachusetts. We have applied for the grant, there's a very high likelihood that we're gonna get the grant. They understand that this is transactional and based upon the sale of the land from Franklin Realty to the town. Doesn't require us to buy the land, but if we don't get the land, we won't get the grant. It's, they're sort of tied together in that way. The state is, is well aware of the current situation. The wording of the language of the amendment before, the motion before you, when I was told that this was gonna be introduced, I contacted the state. They don't quite frankly where, care where the money comes from. What they are looking from the town council is, if we, you know, if we give you this grant, is it your intention to move forward with this project? It's not saying you have to buy the land, but they wanna know before they announce a grant, that we would be generally inclined to take it and that we have an intention to go down that path. The key in terms of the ownership of the land, and I think that our, our Chairman of the Planning Commission was quite correct. The issue of the contamination is an important issue and it needs to be looked at prior to the transfer of the land from Franklin Realty to the town. I had discussed the issue with Mr. Norton. He claims and says that he has a, what's called a 21E environmental study of that property that I believe was done in the 1990s. But after listening to the board vote it down and the concern that the board, board voted about the contamination issue, he said that he would be willing to pay for an updated 21E study from the 1990s today. He'd be willing to pay for that prior to the transfer of the land. The town council tonight is voting on the general concept that we would move forward, but there are two key votes that this town council will have to make in the future. One is the acceptance of the actual grant, because the grant doesn't become an official grant until the board votes to actually receive the grant. And secondarily, the transfer of the land. I would expect that if I brought forward a 21E proposal that was contaminated, the town council would look at me and say, go away. That would be the general inclination. And, and prior, I wouldn't even consider asking them to transfer this land without a 21E study to look at, since once they express their concern. There doesn't seem to be an issue in, in terms of contamination. At least there's not a common belief because, one, nothing was ever built on this property. Two is that Chip assures me there was one done in 1990. But I recognize and appreciate the town council's concern about this potentially being contaminated, what could have happened from 1990 to today. So I think the 21E study is a requirement, and it should be clean before this council ever votes on it. And that would be something we bring forward into the future. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the time to comment.
Councilor Carrasco. Councilor Carrasco.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I just, I, I just wanna address one, one statement that was made in regards to the grant, saying that if we get this, we have to go through it and we have to continue. I know that we have been recipients of many grants. I know that recently, we received a grant for $850,000 for a housing project on Central Street from the state of Massachusetts. And unfortunately, that grant never got off his feet. We, that developer was not able to do what they were, said they were gonna do. So that grant was lost. We didn't do anything with that. And that development on Central Street still remains the same, looking the same vacant position. So, if we move forward as a council, just to say, yes, state of Massachusetts, thank you for considering us, we will, we will look into and do our due diligence in making sure that before we spend a dollar, before we even go forward with anything, that we are making sure that the property we're getting is adequate, safe, secure. And we're gonna be responsible, because, you know, I do have concerns as well, that, you know, Mr. Spinelli spoke as, as a member of his experience as a planning board in regards to holding people accountable. So if, if that's something that needs to be done, it has to be done. It doesn't, you can't just say, okay, yeah, we're gonna give you, give me this land. No, we're gonna have to make sure that everything we do, we cross our t's, dot our i's. But I, I just, I'm confused, I, I really am confused with so much discussion about the next step, rather than dealing with this step in front of us. We're, we're, I, I just, there, yes, we, we understand that there's gonna be more steps, but if we vote it down, there's no steps, absolutely. From this point on, there's nothing. But at the same time, what messages, what message are we sending the grantor? What, what message are we sending to them? Saying, you know what, I've afforded you the opportunity to try to develop something and now you have not even attempted to do it. Why are we gonna consider you in the future anyways? What are we saying to those that have worked, that we have given the charge to, to follow and develop and do something with the master plan? You know, we keep hearing it. We, we heard it on Monday night from the, the individual that was one of the heads of that master plan, of redeveloping that river, doing something with the river, doing something productive. I just, this is an opportunity, yes, there's gonna be different opportunities that we can do. And, and I agree, that we still have a lot of homework to do before us. This is not something that we're gonna rush through. The, the reason we're rushing this vote is because we have to vote before the 31st of December. If not, we're not even in...
In the running.
In the running for the grant. So, it, that's the only thing that we're rushing, is to get our name on the board with maybe 10 other communities. This is not even saying that we're going to get that. And I want the public to really understand that, that we're having this discussion and we're hearing you, and, and I appreciate you coming out, I appreciate everyone on both sides. But just if we vote yes tonight, or we vote no, it doesn't mean we're gonna get this Riverside Park. It means that the process has begun and we still have a lot of homework to do. That we still have to make sure that we have a 21E done. That make sure that our DPW and our police department are able to do the very things that they need to do in order for a Riverside Park to be functional. You know, I, I'm under the impression that the land across from where our town comment and our police department was not there. It was donated as well. And I'm pretty sure that those, those that received that land, that had to be, that, that homework had to be done. So, I, 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 I'm a little confused with a lot of the chatter that, that I'm hearing and I want to just reiterate to the public that just if we say yes, we're gonna move forward, this doesn't mean we're getting a Riverside Park. All this means is our name, Southbridge, is on the drawing board so we can be a recipient of this grant. If we don't get it, then I would come back and agree wholeheartedly with Councilor Clements that we have to appropriate that $100,000. Because there's no Riverside Park coming anytime soon. But at this point, why move something when we do have the opportunity to make something like that gentleman said, with possibilities? Again, we still have a lot of homework to do, but just because we say yes tonight, or another night, 'cause some don't wanna vote, doesn't mean that we not gonna start, stop doing our homework. It means we got more work to do. I just, I would hope that we would tell the state, yes, consider us for that grant. So we can move forward and understand that if things are not suitable, if the land is not, well, if the plans that were developed are not followed, sorry, state, we're gonna have to turn this grant back to you again.
All set, Mr. Carrasco? Councilor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'd just like to touch upon something that Councilor Carrasco mentioned in regards to Central Street. That wasn't town property. That was property owned by a private investor. It's unfortunate that the grant didn't go through. He got some, he was trying to go through like syndicately. But whatever that case may be, it wasn't town-owned property. And I believe that it, we have to buy this piece of property from Mr. Norton or accept it in order to show the state. So if we don't even get the grant, we're responsible for that piece of property? No, we're not responsible. Okay. So I, I just, I want to be clear on that. But that $850,000 for that grant that that private investor got, that, that's not town-owned property. So, I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Carrasco.
If I may respond, it was not town-owned property, but it was a town grant, that it went through the grant of the town. So that's what I'm saying. The town ended up forfeiting that grant because that developer did not follow suit. I never said that property was owned by the town. I, I said that the grant was owned by the town, and the town had to give it back. That's all. Thank you.
You gave your turn. Thank you.
Councilor DePietro.
Through you, Madam Chair. Based on some of the comments at the podium, I just wanna make sure that my motives are misunderstood here. I am a passionate fan of the arts, of having Southbridge look like a downtown putting, having Southbridge, that section that was proposed for the water park, like you see in, in Providence. Love it. I'm not against that. My problem is that the roads to get there are in need of repair. You got $100,000 to throw somewhere, talk to your fire chief, talk to your police chief, talk to your DPW. We are going to be, as years go on here, with less income, which we're all aware of, and we better prepare for that. As far as not voting on this, I am absolutely not. I think this council set a very dangerous precedent tonight again. And what is to stop three councils again, to hold this meeting again on the same agenda right, and it goes on for the rest of our lives? That's why it's in this book. That's why Charter refers to this book. These are the bylaws this council has to, has to operate under. And we just threw it out the window. It's ridiculous and, and it's, it's, councils should be ashamed of themselves tonight. They really should. And, and again, it's not this particular issue. If the town in these chambers, and I, I'm so happy that we, that we have the folks here tonight, come and yell at me in here, come and yell at me on the sidewalk and say, Councilor DePietro, I want that damn park. I'm with you. If that's public opinion, I'm with you. The only reason I was against it from the get-go is from a monetary consideration. The 100% reason I am not gonna vote tonight is because it's an illegal vote. Period. So please, don't misunderstand me. And by all means, I got big shoulders. You tell me I'm doing right, wrong, or otherwise, I volunteer to work for you. It's not my money, it's not the council's money, it's not the town manager's money, it's your money. So feel free anytime to tell myself or any other of these councillors, this is what I want. And let, let your voices be heard. So please, don't misunderstand my motives here. Thank you.
All set? Okay. Okay, any other citizens? Counselor, Mr. Zotos.
Hi, Ms. Elie.
Hello.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. My name is Paul Zotos, I live at 60 Charlton Street, Southbridge, Massachusetts. And I am pro Riverside Park. I'm pro everything that will grow this town and help everybody have a better town. Most people know I do. I'll have to repeat myself tonight. I love Southbridge. I've spent my life trying to make this a great town. I still think it's a great town. Little history, everything that's nice in Sturbridge was built by someone from Southbridge. I don't know if the manager knows this, I don't know if everybody knows this, but you can't name something nice in Sturbridge that wasn't originated, thought of, built by a guy from Southbridge. Example, Sturbridge Village, the hotel was by the Bowlin Brothers, the Semenelli family built, a health club, a restaurant, and an art center. The Regips built a mall. The Mitchells built a hotel. Everything, if we had done everything in Sturbridge and Southbridge, Southbridge would be Sturbridge. Think about it. And we're still doing it. I think Harrington's going to open a hospital, or some kind of building in Sturbridge now. So everything that was great, everybody who had a great idea, did it in Sturbridge. That's why we're like this now, you know? So finally, the hotel came, and the police station came, and the school came. There was a big fight that the school was built on a dump. We had to fight about that for two years. But we built the school, it seems to be in a nice place. Everything seems to be okay. So we should do this. And we should do this in steps, very cautiously, very judiciously, very carefully, but we should do it. We should make this whole town beautiful. I want the whole river cleaned. When I was 11 years old, I worked on Westville Dam. I was a water boy, and I had a few other jobs up there. And all my life, I wanted the river cleaned from Westville Dam to the AO. And it was a dream to put a college at the AO, and we put a community college at the AO. A dream of everybody's in Southbridge. When that AO closed, everybody wanted a college there, we did it. I don't think anybody's talked to Richard Neal in this whole situation. Richard Neal was part of everything we have in Southbridge, from the hotel to the school to everything. And nobody's talked to Richard Neal, no one talked to our senators. I haven't seen our state reps weigh in on this. I don't know what's going on with our senators and local state reps. But I know Richard Neal loves this town, and he would know how to help us move this thing forward, because the police station, the school, everything we love in this town, Richard Neal was part of. And, you know, I don't think anybody's even called him on the phone. I think we lost his number. I don't know what happened. But I want this thing to go through, and I think we should do it, and I don't think anybody should stop us. I think we can make this town beautiful. We can all start making this town beautiful tomorrow. We can all do one little thing we can do. Our house, our front yard, let's paint your house, fix your yard, cut your bushes, clean the street around your neighborhood, talk to your neighbors and friends, because this is a beautiful town. I've been filming it and taking pictures of it for 20 years, and I can't, if I walk uptown tomorrow, I will take 20 pictures. And what am I going to do tomorrow? I don't know anymore. But let's do this. And the people that are here, they would come to every meeting. I know these people, I know every one of them in here. These people want to come to every meeting, but...
Mr. Zotos, how you doing? What's time?
Okay, it's just, it's tough for them to be treated the way they do.
Second.
Give me 30 seconds. I'll wind it in 30 seconds.
All in favor?
I love you too. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. But they would come to every meeting. All these people, they would take the time to come to every meeting. But let's be cordial, and let's relax, and let's just talk. There's only one agenda tonight. You know, we don't need five minutes for, it's one agenda, it's Christmas. I would love to sing, you know, Noel, or Silent Night, or Jingle Bells, I'll get it going if you like.
Mr. Zotos, the waterside park issue, okay?
Let's do this water park, everybody.
Top act, go ahead. Reverend Kirsten Nelson-Rohenfeldt, and, well, hello, councilors. It's so nice to have time with all of you, and thank you for your service to this town. I very much appreciate that. I live at 251 Marcy Street. I am very invested in this town, and some of you know my husband's very invested in this town, but I'm not here to just talk about him, just about me, and about the fact that when we moved into Southbridge about four years ago, the thing that we just couldn't believe, the thing that I just couldn't believe, was how much potential this town has, and how much we have a really clear problem that everyone seems to agree about, which is that we have a perception problem. We have a morale problem. People don't seem to understand, when they're from other towns, how wonderful Southbridge is. Am I right? So the question I have about this particular motion on the table is how is this motion going to help us with that morale and perception problem? I believe this is the deep and the most central problem to what we are dealing with in Southbridge right now, and I would like you as town councilors to please consider that deeply as you make this decision, to just take the next step, to even give us the opportunity to consider whether or not it's appropriate to build a park in this piece of land. So please consider what the perception and the morale of this kind of park in a very public area would do for people who drive through our town, and for the people who live here and can see something visually. I know everyone uses a police and fire, and I find them very valuable, I'm so grateful for their service in our town and in our neighboring towns. But it's harder to see that something visual can really be a morale boost in a town like ours. So I ask you to please consider that, and I stand in support of this park. Thank you.
Excuse my attire, councilors, my fellow colleagues, I just came from a construction site straight to the meeting. It's almost mind-boggling on how you get to this point with so much lack of unity and lack of planning. I sat as chairman of the biggest infrastructure project in the town of Southbridge, that was the middle high school. We did it on time, under budget, and we didn't raise your taxes to build that building. We were creative, we had a unanimous vote of the council, unanimous vote of the school committee, and a unanimous vote of the building committee. Do you know what it takes to get that unified vote in Southbridge? Because we've always been a community that we know we're against, but not what we're for. Tonight, you saw so much passion here. I see developers, people that have put money into this town, and we all want a good town. But don't for a minute let emotions get into any decision-making when you're going to cross the Ts and dot the Is. The reason why our infrastructure project on the middle high school went so well was because of the planning and development, the communication. It doesn't cost any money to communicate with that town manager, that chairman, and anybody else here. If this park was as big as everybody is, and I'm going to tell you right up front, I'm in favor of the park. I was on the school committee, and I still am, and I was at a meeting, and they said they voted the park down. I go, well, first of all, I have a tremendous amount of respect for these councilors, they're in the boardroom, they're doing the work, they have the information, I don't. I couldn't wait to talk to some of my colleagues, so I could find out, what do we do to try and where are the problems? If we have to troubleshoot, let's troubleshoot. And don't start throwing the 21E around, because I'm an experienced 21E guy of my properties. The DPW barn, which we bought for a million, went up to 18 million because of 21E. My garage at the bottom of Main Street, which isn't too far from this water park, they already did an environmental cleanup. And then when I did the test, it was dirty. So we have to get the planning and development. I'm a big fan that if I was the chairman of the council, if I could give you some advice as a former chairman of the council, I probably would have had an ad hoc committee appointed by the chair to create a board, or a small committee to report back to subcommittee, and put people on there that know something about environmentals, something that they know about water park, a builder. I mean, when we did the building committee, we had a local gentleman that was an architect, a local engineer, the building inspector, a licensed contractor, educators. We took the cross-section of the best minds in Southbridge to build that building. And that's what we should be doing on this. Now, I am a parliamentarian, and your vote tonight is illegal, and it breaks my heart to say that. Mike DePietro is so right right now, because you cannot, the last meeting when you voted to flip the vote, that's when you should have rescinded the vote, reverted back to subcommittee. All of this work should happen in subcommittee. You shouldn't be up here beating each other up, and I look at all the snide remarks and name-calling, I go, I look at it and I say, guys...
All in favor?
There is nobody in this hall right now that doesn't want that water park. It's good for the town, but I don't know the financial impact. I hear the landfills closing, there's a lot of things going on that these councilors know the information. They have the data. And if they don't, they should be communicating with the front office to know the data. But to hurry up and vote and say, well, we got to get up the ladder, they already told me that when we built the school. We didn't rush, we didn't react, and we didn't let emotions get in our decision-making. We used our brain, not our heart. Although our heart is what is our strongest, in Southbridge, it's there, we have heart. A lot more than some of the surrounding towns that someone was praising earlier. I can just tell you from experience, I don't know how you reverse this train and bring it back to planning and development, or what you do with it. But I know this vote on the floor, guys, with all due respect, to vote, to overrule the chairman on this, and I know I've disagreed with that chairman from time to time, but her ruling was correct. He read it out of the parliamentary book. And the thing you have to understand, guys, girls, we have a charter, we have state laws, we have bylaws, and we have parliamentary procedure. No matter what your emotional feeling is for this project, don't ever bend the rules, because once you bend them, the next councillor comes up, they're going to say, hey, they did it, why can't I do it? And I served for a few years with some of the old timers, and that's the advice they gave me when I was 24 years old, and I sat in that chairmanship. I never forgot it. So, bit of advice, don't get upset, don't get emotional, find the road back on this project. I can't speak to the finances, guys, if the town has the money or doesn't have the money. I know that I'm considering a run for the town council because of the lack of communication on behalf of the government. I think we need more charter work, we need more bylaw work, the rules are there for you to win. Go out there and win this one, but do it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. And I'm going to comment on that. Some people might wonder why we didn't do anything, or we didn't maybe form a committee or do something. We were sent an email August 14th, I believe it was, that said, "Councilors, we're great news, we've been put in a grant, and we'll know by November or so whether we get it, it's a great opportunity." And there was an attachment with the grant, it was about five pages, and that is how we learned of the grant being put in. Immediately, there were concerns, and Counselor Steves and I met with the town manager and voiced our concerns, which were, again, I've said it before, Counselor Steves said way more than I did. And we didn't get the answers at that point. And we moved forward, as time went on, the grant was in, we didn't know what we could do to remove the grant, the grant was in. And as far as we knew, that was it. And with no talk to this council, no discussion on a gentleman's agreement with a piece of land, no... And then suddenly, the state came back and said, what was sent to them wasn't enough, and they wanted to see a vote by this legislative body, ensuring them that we would move forward with this program. And there has to be a reason, as stated by the town manager, but I state again, there is a reason that they want us to sign and dot, and make sure that we're committed to this project. These grants come every year, there are park grants every single year. I also will point out one other thing, and that is, we keep saying that this is really not anything major, we're just going to do it, and don't worry about it if nothing, if it doesn't go right, or if we don't get it, or we get it. This particular motion, the illegal motion, is that we authorize the town manager and the manager's office to enter into all agreements and execute any constructing a Riverside Park. That's pretty strong language in something that we give up tonight by voting yes, if you voted, if you intended to vote and overthrow the other vote. We authorize by that vote, this town manager, to make those decisions for us. So I still counter that there's way more. Thank you, Mr. Lozo, for your input, because that's exactly how a number of us feel. I'm going to let Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just to, a couple of the points that you just made and that were made, you know, I think that you could, you can, you can make a case probably either way, you know, whether or not this should have been brought up. You know, I've spent time calling the AG's office to find out, I've spent time going back through town documents and town meetings. You know, I brought up earlier today the Leachit facility that was brought back up for a revote. You know, I think that if you look at the differences between the Leachit facility proposal from the first time and the second time, there were less changes than is in this. And at that time, you voted in favor for that both times, and never raised a single issue about it being up for revote. I would, I would say that this is an order, and apparent, I was, a majority of this council agreed with me to continue discussing it tonight to appeal your decision, that this is an order, because enough has changed in this that it warrants rediscussion. And I wish that it could have gone a different way, I wish that we could have, you know, discussed it as a whole, either in subcommittee. I'm not sure why this is as contentious as it is. It's a good project, there are some reservations that I think that are, that I think are very valid, and there are concerns that are very valid, but I think that the project outweighs those. And I think that you've heard from a lot of more visionary, creative folks tonight about things that could occur, and I hope that everybody's making a decision based on the long-term of this project, and not just the short-term purposes. Yes, you could use $100,000 to fix less than a quarter mile of road somewhere in town, but this would be allowing our citizens, this would be taking what we already have down there at the common, with, you know, Stephanie DiMartino spoke tonight very eloquently about the positive economic gain that even the common has brought to us. And this would just be building up on that, and in a very positive way. So I hope that when you're, when we're making our decisions, we can think about more of what the long-term benefit is to the community, and not whether not this one single $100,000. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just, I know there's a line going of citizens still, but I would like to hear from Chip Norton, if we may, and if he's willing to come to the podium and answer some questions that this council may have in regards to this project, and in regards to the land that we are talking about, because I know there's been a lot of discussion. But I would like to hear from him in regards to, what was his heart? What was his idea? Why? I know the town manager had stated that there was some reservation, and then we voted it down, and he came back and provided a change. And that's why I requested, I was part of the three councilors that requested the special meeting, due to the fact that it was brought to my attention that the chair refused to put it on the regular agenda. So by her refusing to put it on the regular agenda, what was presented to us was something completely different. We're looking now at a different funding mechanism. I understand that we're giving a lot of authority to our town manager, but at the same time, that's one of his duties as a hired individual from us. So, please, 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 not right now, you can do it at the end of the meeting when we all leave. That's when we deserve the applause, when we go home. But reality is that, you know, I'm not looking to break any violations. I think the first violation that, the first, never my violation, excuse me, scratch that, the first contention was not being able to bring it back on the agenda, to have a discussion, because things were brought up. That's the whole reason. I wouldn't have asked for a special meeting if I didn't feel that this proposal was different. Chip Norton is the one that saw our vote, probably watched the meeting, and said, you know what, let's do something. So can I, Chip, can, are you willing?
Thank you for having me here tonight.
So Chip, my first question would be, why, why come to us even after the vote was done?
Well, I saw the article in the paper, and some of the concerns the council's had about the transaction. about the transaction. So I contacted the city manager on the two issues that seemed to pop out, which was environmental and maintenance, and told the manager that from an environmental standpoint, the property went through an extensive multi-year study back in the 90s, and this specific area never popped up as having any issues whatsoever. I always, it did pop up, we're all mitigating, taking care of, and the site's been signed off on by Mass DEP back in the late 90s, early 2000s. And I offered to update the study on this specific parcel just to confirm that nothing's changed, you know, over 20 or 30 years, which probably hasn't because that area hasn't really been used for anything. So it was probably more just to clarify if there was any confusion about the property, the piece of land. And then on the maintenance side, we do a tremendous amount of maintenance on the property. As you can imagine, it's 67 acres to be maintained. So we have a crew and a internal staff that does all that. So for us to maintain the 1.3 acres as part of our regular program is not a big issue for us. So I thought that could be helpful if we offered to do that in perpetuity, basically. That'd be part of the deed, that'd be a responsibility of the owner of the property, surrounding property, to maintain the land.
If I may, just as a follow-up, I know that, sitting on this council, it's gonna be year number five for me, I know that we were in negotiations with the police parking lot, that that just what happened. But it's been brought to my attention that in the past, this has not been something different or something new that you've worked with the town in regards to land. Is that true?
On this specific parcel?
Or the property, or across? Because I know that's-
Well, no, we've had, as part of the police station, we donated in 96, back when Florence Chandler was the town manager. We worked out an arrangement to donate the land across the street that is now the common. And as part of that, the town had done a study determining the best location for a new police station, and determined that area was well-suited from a geographic standpoint and access standpoint. So we agreed to donate the land, both the common for the town to use and the land for the police station to be built on.
And thank you for doing that, because that's generated tons and tons of activities and revenue for this community. That's all I have.
Councillor Steves?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for coming up and being willing to answer some questions. I do have a few. I was one of the big, if you have seen previous meetings, I was one of the big, one of the most concerned about environmental concerns down there. Specifically, the idea of the property being contaminated and the river, and the river mud itself also being contaminated. Because then, obviously, it's an ancient industrial facility, and almost always, industrial facilities are contaminated. I know that, I know that you have done some work on various parts of the property. I don't know about that particular section of it. I was, like, for example, I was aware of the Rouge Brook cleanup several years ago on the other end of the property. But my concern about this particular area is, you just mentioned that you are, you have a crew that does maintenance of your property, and I was curious about the fence itself and the downed trees and the bridge on that particular section of the property, which are in pretty bad shape and have been for some time.
Yeah, you're correct. That needs to be taken care of. I was out here a couple of weeks ago and realized that some areas that fence need to be repaired and replaced. We're gonna take care of that immediately.
Except that they've been down for a couple of years now.
Well, you know, I can only speak to what I have seen and know, but I've noticed that needs to be addressed. We've had portions of that fence go down before cars have run into it, people have knocked it over, and it is our responsibility to maintain it, and we will.
I know that the town manager mentioned that you have an old, an old environmental study. Do you, could you email it to us?
Could I what?
Could you, the town manager mentioned that you have an old environmental study. Would you be able to email it to us so that we can read it?
Yeah, as I said to the town manager, it's the whole property, covers a lot of things. I'd like to take a look at it and see if it can be slimmed down and reduced so it addresses the specific area you're talking about. I'm happy to do that.
Because I know I took a quick look at the DEP's reportable sites website, which has literally thousands of pages regarding the AO property.
Right.
And they are admittedly scattered all over the property. There's all kinds of stuff going on that they've looked at over the course of the last couple of decades. And, I mean, granted, it's thousands of pages, so I wasn't, I wasn't about to wade through it.
Yeah, but if you notice, the, the projects have different numbers.
Yep.
And so those are specific areas that were identified in a, in a Phase 1 back in the 90s. And then what's called a Phase 2 is done in those areas. So there's a project number for those specific areas, and it's not hundreds and hundreds. It's a handful of areas that were addressed through a Phase 2 and then remediation, so...
Do you know if there's ever been work specifically done on that stretch of the river?
Well, as I said, they did a study on the whole property. So they walked that area, they looked at history on that area, and determined there was no contamination, didn't see anything or see anything in the history that would lead anybody to believe there's any contamination on that piece of land.
How about in the mud of the river itself?
The river itself?
Well, I know in the past that there, I know in the past that I have seen it at being very low water with tires and all kinds of stuff sticking out of the mud.
So we drain, yeah, yeah, we drain the river every year because the, there's piping that connects from our river upstream to Charlton for the power plant. They draw water. So to your point, that water is obviously in pretty good condition to do that. But we drain the river down to clean up that equipment, and we try to clean the riverbanks as best we can when we do that. It's a once-a-year sort of exercise.
And also, I was, I got an interesting call earlier today that was raising concern about the dam at the end of the pond and specifically the fact that the spillway beside it includes a turbine. That, the person who was calling me was raising concerns that if somebody was using that pond and were to go over the dam and especially go into the spillway, they would probably kill themselves.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to the safety factors of being in that river. We'll have to look at that, obviously. So, but that's a good point. We'd have to be looked at and figured out, so...
Okay. That's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Councillor Mackenzie?
This is, actually, this, Madam Chair, this is actually directed to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This agenda item says to vote to approve the park grant, not to vote to approve the park itself. We have work, we have, as Councillor Carrasco indicated, we have our due diligence to do in researching this, but without voting to go forward with the park grant, aren't we tying our hands completely and then not able to get this grant at all? If we vote to approve going forward with the grant and then do our due diligence in studying it, then we can, then we can make a decision intelligently with research as to whether we want to continue to go forward. We can deny, obviously, we can deny or refuse the kind offer of Mr. Norton if we don't get the grant. And so I'm wondering if we can do that. And my second question, and my last question, is what if we were to vote to rescind last week's, or last Monday's proposal and then look to have a legal, would this vote then be legal if we wanted to have a new proposal? Because this could actually be treated as a new proposal.
No, the negative vote on the rescind does not allow you to then bring it back up.
So, once it's negative, once it's not, we should have, we should have actually rescinded it on Monday rather than-
Exactly.
That would have been, okay.
And to your, would you like me to?
I'm finished.
To your other, it's my understanding, as it's been explained to us and from the town manager, the park, the people who are the government, the state, who is part of this park, this grant program, is asking us, it's not just about the vote here, it encompasses this language on the bottom. That language is tied to the vote, and whatever we offer up here is what needs to be done. Now, if we don't get the grant, you're right, we don't expend anything. But they want to know that should they say you're getting the grant, that you've showed them a funding source and a mechanism to be able to do it. So whether it is borrowing the money, which we were gonna only borrow the money if we got the grant, or loaning ourselves the money from another account, which might be already, generally, our landfill royalties have gone to OPAP obligations and retirements such. And I'm a little kind of confused as to how we want to just take money out when we already discussed the fact that we don't have enough to fund what we normally do in the budget because the royalties have gone down with the landfill closing. They've already reduced the royalties for this year, and next year, as we know, will end in December. So, you know, the fact that we're gonna borrow one to the other is confusing as itself. So the funding mechanism, whether it's this shell or that shell, it's still money that we have to agree to spend and get reimbursed. And if I just may add one more thing to that, while it's $100,000 on paper, there's a lot of in-kind that's expected from our DPW and other, others in this, in this, other opportunities for use of employee base. But the DPW has to do a number of items, and you can't tell me that that doesn't cost money. So, it's more than that.
What I'd like to ask is, if we could have the town manager expound on that.
Thank you. First of all, in discussing the issue of the money within the landfill account, there's currently $2 million in that account. The money is sitting there, knowing that in the future, we're gonna have some additional expenses that will go to that money. Again, the concept under this particular motion is the money would be borrowed as it's reimbursed, put right back into that account. So it, and frankly, there's some question even if we have to go down that route, because the amount is so small in nature, you could use what's called liquid cash in and out in order not to avoid borrowing or even going into this account. So it's a small amount of money, there's $2 million sitting in that account. I do want to make a point, though, about the language here. This language does give me certain powers, but what clearly trumps anything in this language is that in order to transfer the land, there has to be a vote of the town council to do that. And I can't do, other than to let them know that the town council has an intention to move forward with this project, there's not a heck of a lot I can do until, one, we accept the actual grant, because I don't have anything to spend, and two, is we actually have the land under our ownership to do stuff. So, you know, really, the next steps in the town council and why I think that there has to be at least a majority vote on this, and I, when I say a majority, I mean a permanent majority, not because there's one member missing tonight. There has to be a majority because we are, even if you approve this and we get a clean 21E and, you know, we do all the right things, there still has to be at least a majority of voters gonna vote for those two other future votes. Okay? I want people to understand that. I do want to recognize two other issues, because I keep hearing them, and frankly, it concerns me. There seems to be an implication that we didn't know that this grant was gonna be applied for. As a matter of fact, when I asked for the $100,000 to do this park, the commitment with the town council at that time was that I wouldn't spend a dime until we applied for grant and got at least $200,000 in funds as a matching grant, because $100,000 wouldn't build this park. So the entire town council voted unanimously to approve that, subject to I couldn't spend any money until we got a grant. So everybody knew I was applying for the grant. Secondarily, we first applied for an urban agenda grant that was denied, and as part of my responsibilities, I have to present to the town council, what's called an update of a project management plan as to how we're carrying out our master plan. In the Planning and Development Committee, we went through the entire master plan, project plan, and went through, and I explained to all the councillors that were there about the fact that we were applying for the grant, what property it was, we had been turned down by the urban grant, that we were applying through the park grant, exactly what piece of property. This is, there's nothing new here. There's no surprises about this particular property. I want to make that clear because it's in the minutes of the meeting. I think every councillor that was there understood that it was based upon getting the grant in the first place. So I'm a little confused as to why councillors are surprised that I applied for the grant, that, you know, that was, that shouldn't have been a big surprise because I talked about it numerous times. Questions, in fact, were proposed to me by the chair and the vice chair. They absolutely met with me and discussed their concerns on August 3, 2017, and I did my best to answer all of those questions to the best of my ability and tried to answer questions kind of as we went along. Now, August 3, 2017, was early in the process, and we haven't done certain work because it costs money to do work, and we weren't gonna spend a lot of money until we knew if we were gonna get the grant. There's no sense in, for instance, having a contract with Mr. Norton to purchase the land and pay for the attorney's fees and all the work involved with that if we're not gonna build a park because we didn't get the grant. There's no point in doing environmental study of the land if we were not gonna get the grant because we weren't gonna do the transfer. So a lot of information hinges on, do we want to go forward with the grant? If we get the grant, then yes, absolutely, there's some work that has to be done. But it would be, in my opinion, and I stated this a number of times, it would be foolish to spend taxpayers' dollars to do things that weren't required to be done and with the fact that we didn't know the grant was coming or not yet. That's why some things weren't done at the time, because you had to wait to know if we, in fact, were gonna get the grant or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Councillor Clare, did you have something? Or can we let, you know, can we let Mr. Smick speak? Yes, he's been standing since Mr... You may come forward, Mr. Smick.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. This is the third public meeting that I'm gonna state that I think the park is a great I think it's gonna create a lot of recreational opportunity, and I think it'll also play a major role in beautification of this town. But as a lifelong resident of this town and a former councillor, I don't want to hear about economic opportunity. It seems like every time this town wants to do something, probably in the last 20 years, they promise there's gonna be an economic boom payoff for what we're doing. And I've heard that time and time again, and it hasn't happened yet. So I'm just, I'm just gonna, I think it's a great idea, but I think the timing is wrong. I think we have a lot more important items that have to be dealt with in this town, and I anxiously await for this council to get to work. I want to spin off a little bit about what former councillor Lozo said about doing your homework and hard work. Now, three, I don't know if it was three weeks ago, the general government subcommittee that brought up the subject, and with all due respect to the town manager, questions could not be answered at that subcommittee meeting. Now, this grant application dies next week, and three weeks ago, a majority of the questions could not be answered. So I got an issue about the homework. Apparently, there's gonna be a vote later. Madam Chairman, I request, what is that vote going to be? And what are the voting requirements? Is it a two-thirds vote, a majority vote, a majority of five, a majority of those present in voting? What is the requirement of the vote?
That's a really good point to bring up. In what I have read, it's a majority of the council. And I would certainly entertain taking a five-minute recess to just make sure I can give you a clear answer. This, my original belief is that it was a two-thirds vote, based on the fact that we are appropriating funds and switching them from accounts in the budget process, and there is a line in when we give money that specifically states that if there is an increase in one account over the other, it requires a two-thirds vote. So, that's something I would just have to, I was very concerned about-
Well, okay, well, the question can't be answered right now.
-this suddenly became, from a two-thirds vote the last time because we were borrowing money, to a, because we are switching accounts, a roll-call vote, which should be a majority of the council.
Okay, well, it's gonna be a roll-call anyway.
Right. There'll definitely be a roll-call vote.
But if-
It's a majority.
Not knowing what the parameters are on the voting requirements, I would urge every councillor to vote. Whatever your, whatever your wish is, express it through your vote, because it could affect the final vote depending on what the vote is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smick. Okay. Sorry, Councillor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kasperstern, I'm sorry.
Mr Casperson, I'm sorry, I can't hold this in anymore. I've been waiting. And in deference to Mr Smick, I wanted to follow something that was stated by Mr Lazo, and I'll ask just a little bit of latitude because I want to come full circle with this. Excellent advice from experienced, knowledgeable, reputable councillors. I'm really glad to have some of them here. And emotion seems to play a very big role in every meeting we have, as Mr Lazo said. He sees it, I think everybody else does. We've all had our, our own issues, and when it comes to this particular grant application and the vote, it's been heated, there's no doubt about it. Mr Smick took it a step further and said he's waiting for the town council to get to work, and I'd like to remind the council, again, I'll come full circle, I brought to General Government last month, goals and objectives, priorities. It died. We haven't done anything. I keep bringing up this topic, but I kind of feel like I'm the only one that's expected to do any of the work. And I'm sorry if that hurts feelings, but after being scolded tonight to be ashamed of putting my name on a piece of paper, to bring this back up because I believe the community wants to talk about it, I'm not willing to just back down. And I'd like to think that we do have councillors here that want to do the right thing across the board. We want to establish priorities. We want to find something about which to be unified. We are divided. We do not have this wonderful record of voting in line time and again, and that's okay. But at the end of the day, this is a, a cut-and-dry slam dunk for $100,000 that was appropriated back in 2016. Don't have to buy into the economic opportunity thing, as Mr Smick had said, but if we don't have a vision for something, we sure as heck could better get to work in establishing something because it's going downhill fast and I'm tired of it. Thanks.
Okay, the councillors. I'm going to let Mr Casperson speak.
Thank you. Dimitri Casperson, 51 North Street, once again. I had, I just wanted to make a point in response to, to Mr Smick's comments. This town has, over the time that I've been here, over 20 years, done repeated studies of what this town needs for economic development. It started with a long-term plan. There was a charrette done in the, the long-term plan, I believe was in the early 2000s. There was a charrette done in the mid-2000s. I believe one of the architects is in the audience tonight for that. And then, at the end of, of this would be the master plan process. All of those processes involve experts, people who are brought in, who have literally turned communities around. And Mr Smick makes an argument that, that he keeps hearing promises, and, and I think the problem is that these studies, these plans from experts who have turned communities around all over this state are ignored repeatedly in favor of foolish diversions on things like industrial parks with no feasibility studies done, or turning our town into a regional landfill. You will never find either of those suggestions from any expert that has ever looked at this town. All right? And through, you know, to the Chair, from what you're saying, it sounds like our, our commitment here to get this grant of $250,000 is the $100,000 that you voted for, and this council, with different members, voted for unanimously. Is that correct? This is a $100,000 commitment to get roughly $330,000, $350,000?
Actually, I believe it's a lot more than $100,000. The initial is 100. We have in-kind services, so when the DPW has to build, cut, clean, and take away from keeping up the maintenance in areas in other parts of the town, that costs money.
But why would that not be...
And in fiscal, you asked me a question, I'll repeat, I'll respond.
Okay, but you're not answering.
I am. It costs more money, and that study has not been done for that. We have not actually estimated.
But that seems, with due respect, you seem confused. Because we're getting $250,000, that work, that can come out of that additional grant money.
No, it can't, sir. You're confused. Let me just explain.
And why, why would that be?
There's in-kind, Mr Town Manager, there is an in-kind donation that is expected, sir. There's an in-kind donation from the community that is expected, and there were some expenses, like the Crosswalk Building and numerous others, that we had to take off the, they would not cover those expenses in, in the plan.
Okay, and what, what are those? You've obviously done...
Well, I don't have it in front of me at this moment. Maybe the manager does, but there's numerous.
All right.
I'm not going to argue the point, sir. I'm just saying, there's more expenses.
Yeah, it sounds like you need to do your research, to me. I mean, you're, you're complaining about...
Sir, we're not going to argue this. Do you want to finish your time on the subject?
Okay, yeah, I'd like to finish my time.
Okay. Or do you want two more minutes?
Through, I'd like to ask Mr Di Pietro a question.
Hold on. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Mr Di Pietro, he's of...
Mr Di Pietro, I'd like, I'd like to ask you a question. I'm, I'm holding before me a notice report on taxes overdue to the town.
This is irrelevant to this discussion, sir.
I'd like a chance to finish my statement.
And I will not let you, I will not let you...
How do you, how do you know it's irrelevant?
I'm telling you that you are going down a line that will not be tolerated here. Do you have a question on the Waterside Park?
Yeah, I have a question. If we had $87,120 of overdue taxes...
Sir, you're out of order.
From Mr Di Pietro, would we, would we be able to...
You will remove yourself from the podium, sir.
Good evening. Kevin Buckson, 28 Columbus Avenue. I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I found myself drawn up here once again. It's usually not my subject, but believe it or not, most of you might know me as, my main subject being the landfill. Recreation is a hobby of mine that I participate in town committee meetings and such. I, I really think this is an opportunity, even though the timing is tight with the grant, I think it's an opportunity. You need to seize the moment. Regardless of what you do or don't do tonight, I, I'm assuming one thing will occur, and that is, that property will be cleaned up. Now, if you go through the grant process and Mr Norton is gracious enough to donate the land, the town, with the help of grant money, will clean it up and turn it into a public space. If you choose not to go that route, the next route you must follow would be to declare that the area is a blight by your newly-appointed blight bylaw and enforce the blight bylaw and have Mr Norton clean the property up. Now, I would assume if Mr Norton's going to fix the trouble with the property, he's going to hold on to that property as an asset of his hotel and conference center. Does that change the actions of this council tonight? I don't know. I'm sorry to see the timeline get so close and for so many people to turn out and want to speak on this subject. In over 30 years of speaking on the landfill, I've very rarely seen this much attendance over the landfill issue, and we had to go to ballot for that. All I would like to say is I think it's worth the outreach to, to take the vote and move forward with the grant and, because we need open spaces. If you don't realize it, the only real open spaces in town that we're creating right now is when we're spending 80, $90,000 to take down abandoned buildings, and they don't turn into nice riverside parks. They're just empty lots. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, actually, I just want to, just want to briefly, something that Kevin just said, just want to point out that we do actually have quite a few, quite a, quite an extensive park properties in our community. You've got Coal Forest, you've got the McKinney Street Trail, you've got a bunch of other places that are, that are kind of off, slightly off the beaten path, but they're generally pretty nice. I just wanted to add that, the West Street Trail, among other things. But I also wanted to suggest, think, think, throw this out there for a suggestion. I think some of the, I have a problem with the way this particular motion is phrased in several places. And I'd actually like to, to make a motion, first of all, to change, because we're really, we're really not, the issue here, first off, is that it says we're approving the park grant when we haven't even gotten the park grant. You can't approve what we don't have. So, I, I think, essentially, what we are doing here is formalizing the application for a park grant. We're not approving anything. And if you, if you phrase it as approving the park grant, saying that you've already voted, going forward theoretically, you could, as I, as I would read it, that means you've already approved accepting the money, which, in fact, we can't. So, we're actually applying, we're actually finalizing the application for a park grant. The second part of it that I had an issue with is, let's see here, where, where, I think it was Councillor Clemens mentioned, the authorized answer into all agreements and execute any constructing a riverside park. At that point, I would actually throw in a phrase saying, subject to the vote, to a vote of town council, just to clarify it. And also, at the very end, I have an issue with the last sentence where it says, "The monies will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the grant, once the grant funds are received by the town." It really should be if the grant funds, if, if the grant funds, because we may, we may not get them. And I would actually have it be phrased as, add to, to that, to say, "And shall, and shall be returned if the grant is not approved by the state."
Mr Town.
Just, just answer some questions. So, first, let's start with the last one first, Councillor Steves. The monies will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the grant funds are received. If we don't get the grant, no monies will be spent, so there'll have, there'll be no money to return, because we won't spend any money. The only way this park project goes forward is if we get the grant. So, no money will be taken out of the account if we do that.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
So, you won't have to change it because there'll be no money spent because there'll be no grant. So, there's no need to change the wording because it, you can't reimburse something you don't spend. Secondarily, the, the issue of, it's not really formalizing the grant. The grant is, or the application is complete. What they're looking for is the general sense that if they're going to give us the money, that it's our intention to spend it and appropriate it. That's exactly what they're asking for. Doesn't mean we absolutely have to, but they want to know, they don't want to give us money if we don't have the intention to use the money for the purposes they give it to us. That's what they're really looking for here. There are things that will go where we won't spend the money, even if they give it to us. For instance, if it turns out the ground, ground is contaminated, we're not going to take the land, we're not going to spend the money, you know, period. So, nothing could be authorized to move forward until a couple of things occur. This town council votes to accept the grant, this town council accepts to, accepts the transfer of the land from Franklin Realty to the town. So, there, you know, those are two things by, by charter that the town has, the town council has to do. So, again, this is why it's important to me, and I'll be very clear. First, I want to make it clear, whatever this town council votes, I accept for or against this, it, it, that's my obligation as a town manager. I bring forward what I think is best. You guys vote and make that policy decision. But I'm concerned that the full board's not here, because there's going to be two more votes after tonight. If, if you were to pass this tonight and move forward this motion, and later on, by a 5-4 opposite vote, you vote not to accept the park, we really haven't gone anywhere, have we? Okay? So, that's why I'm a little bit concerned. Even if this vote wins tonight, what do I say to the state? Yeah, we, the council voted for it, but everybody wasn't there and it could change later. That's why it's really important that somebody who was on the opposing side in the 5-4 swings the other side. Otherwise, this is just going to continue to be complicated, and it's going to be very unclear. You follow what I'm trying to say here? And that, that's the problem with it. So, I would like, I ain't going to need, after this vote, some kind of clarity, and I'm not sure, depending upon how this vote goes tonight, I'm going to have that clarity, you know?
So, you had sent us a note today, an email saying that you would abide by the vote of the council, but I contend that in the minutes of the last meeting, you said the exact same thing, and they're in the minutes recorded as such, so, and you didn't, because you worked adamantly to bring forward a different, after that vote went down, you worked adamantly to bring forward another proposal, even though we voted no. Just saying, just saying. I know everyone says it's different and that it's changed.
Let me respond to it.
But you said the exact same thing, and it's in the minutes.
Okay, so, let's, let's, let me be clear. The proposal before you tonight isn't from me. It's from other council members of your board. I did not propose this. I have yet to call a single member of this council and ask them to vote one way or another on this particular project. I've given them the information, I've answered questions, but I have not called anyone. And, and those on the opposing side clearly would know that because I haven't called Councillor Steves and asked him to vote one way or the other. I've asked nobody to vote anyway. I presented all my comments publicly, in front of everybody, and expressed those opinions. I, I have not done, you know, I, I'm, my job is to give you my professional advice as to what I recommend, but it's up to council to make the decision tonight. I've said that before. The vote and the issues before you tonight are not of my doing. They are reflective of different councillors that have their own opinions on this board. At the end of the day, when this is all voted on and finalized, I'm going to follow exactly what the council members have voted on.
And, excuse me for commenting, but clearly, to know where to get money and from what royalty accounts and such, you had to have worked on it.
And I did.
And you did not bring it to our attention, the Chair or the Vice Chair's attention or anything. You just worked on it and produced this.
Individual councillors, Madam Chairman, have the right to ask me questions.
That's just true.
They asked me questions. First, I was asked why there was a two-thirds vote requirement on that last vote. I made the answer to three of the councillors who all called me individually. I said, "The reason for the two-thirds requirement is because we were borrowing money." The next question from one of them was, "Well, if we don't borrow the money, is there any source of where we can get the money?" I answered their question, asked, after talking to the town accountant, I asked for them, her, to give me where the money could be, if they counselled one way or the other, and I answered this councillor's question and made sure, they told me they were working on a motion. They asked me how the motion should be framed, to do what the account numbers were, to frame those motions, and I gave them the answers. I would do so for any town councillor that called me and asked me questions. I'm obligated to do that. If councillor Clemens, if you called and asked me a question, I wouldn't necessarily call up all other eight members and say, "Do you know what councillor Clemens asked me today? Let me share it with you." I would not do that.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr Manager. I just, I recall the last meeting where you had commented that the language had to be exactly as was stated, and therefore you proposed the borrowing. So, I'm just, I'm just following up on that, as to where this language came from.
And you're, and you're, and you're... Just so you know, you're absolutely correct, right? So, so the language was...
If there had been another option, we might have taken that, but you didn't.
The, the language for the, first thing, I asked our town accountant for the language. The town accountant drafted the language for the vote, and she included borrowing it as an option because that allows us all options for the appropriation. So, she included it. When I asked her if it was required, she said the answer was frankly, "No, we probably wouldn't borrow it anyway because it's such a small amount. We wouldn't go out and borrow money and charge interest on that small amount. We probably wouldn't borrow it anyway." But when she drafted the motion, she gave her, herself, all the options that she could in terms of funding this project. After discussions, because councillors asked me, I asked that question, I was told, "Yeah, we probably wouldn't borrow it anyway." And, and frankly, we probably, as I said earlier, we probably wouldn't even use the landfill account. Usually, it's done with liquid cash as it goes back and forth. But this is a clear identifiable, identifiable source to use it from, and this was an option. And that was provided, the answers were provided to me by the town accountant because the councillor asked me those questions.
Councillor Clare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three, I was just going to clarify that I was the, at least one of the councillors that reached out about the draft, or about the, the motion language, and it, I didn't call Mr San Angelo's office and then, you know, he just happened to have something waiting. No, the reason it took so long to do this was because we had to speak with Karen, talk to her, and get all of the appropriate information in order to do this. So, no, Mr San Angelo's not going out and calling councillors and trying to do anything that you're, you're saying. This is why it took so long, and that is the process that was followed when we requested the meeting.
Okay. Just to be clear, I didn't say he was calling councillors. I said he worked on it. I said he worked on it.
If we ask him for something, is he supposed to say no?
Oh, I didn't say that. I said he worked on it.
Thank you, that's all.
Councillor, Councillor Kareska?
Yes, I, I just want to also mention something that you just stated to our town manager, where you, you mentioned another option. If we knew another option, maybe we would have went down that road. You never gave this council the respect of another option because you never put it on the agenda when we asked you to. So, your intention was never to look for another option because your intention was to shoot it down right from the beginning.
Please watch your tone.
Please, watch your tone, we had that discussion earlier about tone.
What tone? I'm talking. There's been other comments, and, and I applaud you for shutting them down, but I'm talking. I'm not, I can raise my voice higher, I can, I can, I can, I'm talking. So, I, I just, I don't understand how we, we say that there's another option. It's been mentioned that it's a financial concern, but if I look correctly, we have one of our full-time police officers here. We're paying him to be here. That's taxpayer money. That's costing us money.
I did not ask them to be here, I'm not sure why they are.
Again, they, it's, I mean, he's in the back room. So again, i- it's costing us money. So regardless of the fact is, we're going to talk about money, we're talking about a, a situation here, and I think this is going completely off-topic here. I think that the, the situation here is this language in regards to this grant. I, I would agree with Counselor Steves in regards to moving and amending some of this language, and especially where it says, at the bottom, where the town manager's office be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute all constructing, constructing a riverside park, subject to council approval. I totally agree with that, because that should be there, and that's a clear directive from this council to our town manager. There's no gray area, we're, we're setting the tone right from the beginning. You know, we hire him to do certain work, and it's not okay for some of us, and it's okay for others. So I, I just, I, I would, I would agree with that. I think there's more citizens that would like to speak. It's nine o'clock, we've been here for two and a half hours, and I, I think we should allow them to continue to speak. So I, I'm, I'm done. I'd rather hear the citizens.
Good evening, I'm Christopher Brier from 25 Hartwell Street, Southbridge. I just want to clarify, I heard somebody earlier talking about another situation with the police department, the parking in the back, some lighting, was a former counselor. He was talking about the DOD, we're talking about the state here. This is, right, am I correct?
I'm not sure where you're from.
Is this a state, this is a state grant?
Correct.
This isn't a DOD, Department of Defense, grant, or any of that kind of stuff, okay?
Yes, sir.
So I think that's something to be very clear about, because some governments move a little slower than others, right? I'm, I'm for this property, I've seen the property, the area itself isn't the greatest, but it can be improved highly. Let's not forget the fact that there are sewer portions in this property, as I recall, that need to be taken care of. If we don't have the state helping us with a grant, then we are paying for that as citizens. So there's my loss on the total of taking a hundred thousand, okay, a hundred fifty thousand, who cares? Putting it to the side, so I can get another two hundred thousand, or whatever it is, and then at the same time, if I don't like that arrangement, I can shut it down. Is that true, Mr. Manager? Town Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's appropriate for me to go through the chairs, I wanted to wait and do that. The, the approximate grant amount is two hundred and thirty-five thousand. The town's contribution is a hundred thousand. The chairwoman is correct in that there will be some involvement of our DPW, because this will have to go out for contract. So our DPW director and our assistant DPW director, some of their time will be invested towards this project and, and setting up the detailed plan with the engineers and that kind of stuff. So, but the general dollar value, the town's contributing is a hundred thousand, the state's contribution is a little over two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, and can we get out of that at any time, of the process?
What would happen is the, they would send us a contract, that would, the town, the Town Council would have to vote to accept the grant.
Town Council.
Yeah, this Town Council would vote to accept the grant, and they would authorize me to sign that we would accept the grant.
The same council that voted you into where you are now?
The, the council that we have today would have to vote on it.
Another, just a left general field question, comment. I recall a couple of years ago trying to do something within the town, and I heard that the town, the town common was very noisy, okay? So not, I mean, I'm just being neutral, I'm not being good, bad, or indifferent. If that property was developed, I would assume that it would be a lot quieter than the town common. I would also make the assumption that, again, somebody had said earlier that we could get different vendors in the area and this kind of thing. My, my personal thing would be to have the high school teaching kids how to use these vendor trucks and doing that kind of thing. That's my personal take, because those kids need something. They need something special, and that would be a big boom for them as they grow. But it would attract all these different things, and another thought is, just, just thoughts, but the last one, I once had a foster kid, and I went to a meeting somewhere in Sturbridge on the town common, where they wanted people to come and meet them on a certain day, and go plant trees up in Brynfield or somewhere. My foster kid wouldn't even take a bicycle and go two hills over. And we have people in this town that have never been out of this town. I've been all over the world, but there are people that have never left this town. And wouldn't it be a great gift to them for the future to see something that is positive, prosperous, and gives them something, some hope? Hope is a big thing, you know? You can't put a price on hope. And that's my response. God bless you all, good luck. I'm, I'm glad I'm not where you are, but when it's over, maybe tea. Take care.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to the town manager, if I may. You said that this has only cost us a hundred thousand dollars, but I saw a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So it, it just went up, like almost twenty thousand dollars.
And thank you, it's a very good question. I attempted to answer that question after the, the subcommittee meeting. Originally, the grant that was applied for was slightly more than the two hundred and thirty-five thousand. The state rejected two things. They rejected the crosswalk that we applied for, and also for private duty police officers. They, because they won't reimburse that. Now, just to be clear, that could be spent out of the town money, but it can't be spent out of the state grant money. So when they rejected that, that lowered the town's contribution, I think it's like eight hundred dollars more than the hundred thousand dollar number now, because when that number went down, the town's contribution went down as well. Now keep in mind that this is a conceptual plan. If the town votes to, let's go through this whole process, the town votes and gets to the end of this process, they vote to acquire the land and everything else. What the next step would be, is we would have to hire an engineering firm, just like we did other things, and they would have to create what's called a detailed design. In other words, they would actually have to plan out a specific design in this park. And of course, what we would say is the maximum amount of money we have to spend in that design is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, or if we wanted to go less, three hundred thousand, whatever amount we want that park to come in at. And they would design and develop the plan to meet the resources we had available to do the park. So it could effectively be even less than that money. The state will only reimburse certain kinds of reimbursements. So, you know, we, if we, if there are things that were non-reimbursable by the state, we would have to use part of that hundred thousand for those non-reimbursable items.
Right, but you're saying it could be less, but it also could be more.
No, it couldn't be more, because we wouldn't put the, the detailed project plan, we would set it up to where, and the engineers are very good at this now, in effect, they could, if they went over, then what we would do is it would be subject, of course, you, you know, to competitive bidding, and we would get contracts in and bids on that, and we wouldn't accept any bids that were higher than the amount of money that we had. So it really couldn't go over, and if it did, we would have control of it during the process to stop it before it went over. As part of the, that's just normal part of the procurement process, and the invitation to bidding process.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a quick, couple of quick questions, first of all. Referring back to, to what you were just saying a second ago, as I recall, I don't remember what the figures were, but there is a figure in the grant itself for, for design and engineering, isn't there? I don't remember what the number was.
There's a list of, and I don't have it in front of me, Counselor Steves, but there's a list of things that are reimbursable by the grant, and that may, design work is probably one of the things that is reimbursable by the grant. The, the agency, the, the park group that's approving the grant, understands that this is a conceptual phase, and they will look at that, we will be sending them, if we ever got to this point, a detailed design, and they would go through with us and let us know what's reimbursable and what's not, and we'd have to work it out with them to make sure we knew exactly what it is, because we won't want to spend money unless we know we're going to get it back, right? So, so if there was something we wanted to do that was not reimbursable, we would then do it out of the hundred thousand dollar town funds that have been set to this plan. Does that help?
Okay, and, and to follow up with that also, and also to follow up on something that Mr. Brier said. He mentioned, let's see, he mentioned the sewer, the sewer things that are in that section, and I just wanted to point out that obviously, I know those are not in the grant. And so if we have to do any work on those, we will have to fund those ourselves. And we would, honestly, we would have to do that anyway, because the sewer lines are. Whether we do the grant or not, we, eventually, we will have to do something with that.
True.
And also, anything else that we would end up having to do, I know that if, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, it's kind of a weird catch-22, because I know Mr. Norton earlier said that he would, he would help, he would fund the environmental study of the project, but any environmental cleanup would obviously not be covered by grant money either, which we, if we, if there is any that would be necessary, I mean, I would, I would vote against it. And, I think, you mentioned that the crosswalk and the details, and there are probably other things that we haven't really thought of that are not covered by the grant money.
So let me, let me start with the environmental thing, first of all. Again, once we saw an environmental grant, if what Mr. Norton says is correct and the land's clean, we got no issue. If there are environmental issues, then the Town Council would have to decide if, what the cost, if any, to re, to, to deal with those are. If it was five grand, we may consider going forward. If it was a hundred and grand, we probably wouldn't decide to go forward. That would be really up to you, in terms of inquiring the property or not, right? So, I don't know. I mean, until we get to that point, we don't know the answer to that question. In terms of the costs, you're correct, there is an abandoned storm sewer line that we kind of thought, I think in the beginning, some people thought it was part of Chip's property. As it turns out, it's a town-owned storm sewer that was abandoned. So, Mr. Norton has never come to the town and asked us to remove it, to date. I feel comfortable saying it, but, but we would have to look within the grant to see if the town funds, if we could do that or not. I have no idea right off the top of my head what the cost of removing that is, if we have to do it. That's something we're going to have to find out. But, again, we, the, the unrefundable grant part of it, okay? And maybe, maybe they would fund some of that, I don't know. But really, what we have to play with is that hundred grand town contribution, we could do what we want with that money. What we can't do is we can't spend the two hundred and thirty-five thousand any way we choose. That has to be spent according to the approval of the grant. Regardless, regardless one way or another, you're correct. At some point in time, it's the town's cost to remove that storm sewer line. This, this may be a, a good way to do it, you know? Frankly, I just don't know yet.
So, you going to come back up?
Hi, again, Joseph Far, Joseph Far, 138 McKenna Street. I just want to come up again just to, because I'm just sitting here listening to everything and everybody had, and I definitely understand of some hesitation on one way or the other, and I do understand this is conceptual, this is the beginning, like, okay, hashing whatever we need to hash out, and, and I do understand too with myself is, this, this ain't going to happen like overnight, obviously. A lot of these projects may take even like at least a year or so for it to be finished. But one thing, one thing I just love to, I was just want to encourage too, and that includes us as a community, is just continue, is just, I know sometimes doing big projects like this can be scary, heck, and just doing it, then all of a sudden, it's kind of like you get, you step the wrong direction, you get your foot blown off or something, just because you took a chance, but one thing I love to just encourage, and no matter what happens, it's like, whatever happens, we shouldn't have bitterness towards the council or anything they may decide to do. And that is one thing that, that makes this whole country in general great, is just the fact we can stand up here, let our voice be heard, and let it be so. And I, and it is a very interesting tug-of-war to figure out, okay, do we want to try out, try to shoot for the stars, and, but at the same time, it's tug-of-war of, okay, hashing out all the details along the way. And I think that, I know for me, I get hung up with that sometimes, and I think a lot of us do too. And I just want to encourage you all to, I know you'll do your best, but I just want to, from my standpoint, just kind of voice saying, do your best. I would love, more than anything, for this to go through for, and if, I can't, I know personally me, I've been thinking about doing certain stuff on my own to help the town. So, if, so, it just, whatever happens, happens, but I definitely hope the best with this and with you all. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I don't mean to add on more time to everyone's night, but I do appreciate, appreciate, and appreciate the patience and stuff. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Good evening, Kathy Digger, Kathy Nicola, back to my old name, 318 Wester Street. I'm not really sure I agree with this meeting. I agree with the sentiment, I like the idea. I think an awful lot of questions have not been answered and need to be answered, but I don't think any more questions can be answered tonight. So I'm up here right now to suggest that you move the question. I think everything you could possibly get out of this meeting, you've gotten. It's two and a half hours, it's time to move the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nicola. I just want to, I'm going to make a comment that this is all about finances for me, and yes, we voted on the money last year, but if we knew then what we know now, we can fix that, because our taxes are going up, our water and sewer rates go up, everything goes up, and our services will go down. We are in a financial crisis here, and to squander away the hundred thousand dollars, and I say it that way plus, because we have a beautiful park on Main Street, we have the town common, we have beautiful areas. If you actually go there and look at a three hundred thousand dollar, one-point-two-acre spot, and most of that one-point-two acres is a, is a ridge that goes from a new development, a proposed development from Mr. Norton, over to the spillway of water that comes under, there's just one small area, almost about the size, maybe a little bigger than this room, that's actually really usable, and it just seems like a lot of money for that little bitty spot, when we could use money for so many other things. So this is a financial decision for me, as an elected official, for this community, knowing what I know about the finances. That's really what it's about here for me. There's a lot of great concerns we had, but ultimately, it boils down to the dollars and the cents, and that's where it stands for me.
Counselors, Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Again, longtime counselors, thank you for coming out, Ms. Nicola, it's good to see you as always. I understand the chair's comment about finances, but I'll remind this community that we spent one hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars to demolish the property at 784 Main Street. If we can do that to help beautify the town, the hundred thousand dollar, thereabouts contribution, for a long time, long, longstanding asset and resource that a park would be, needs to be absolutely seriously considered. I don't think that the way we've handled it has been all that fantastic. I've made those comments, I was on the fence a couple of weeks ago. But at the end of the day, I don't want to miss the opportunity to have such an asset. So I still remain in support of doing this, and with that, I don't know if anyone else, one else had a hand up, but I want to move the question.
Well, there's no second yet, so.
I'll second that.
I had my, the debates, doesn't matter, if they, if they move in second, debate's over. Yeah, debate is, excuse me. Okay, so we've got a first and a second, and we're in. To move the question.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor O'Clare?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Absent.
Absent. Counselor McKenzie?
No.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Three S. Three yes, four no, one absent.
So the question will not be moved?
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Wait, did you just, could you say that again? I'm sorry, I was, when I was thinking.
Okay, so I think we have three yes, four no, and one, he declared absent.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that was.
So three to four of voting members.
Yeah, so the, yeah, he abstained. So, so the debate is still in progress. Counselor Claire.
I just wanted, the reason I voted no to move the question was because I'd like to make, I'd like to move the question with an amendment to the motion. And I would like to add Counselor Steve's notion that right after Side Park on the fourth line from the bottom, that we add, subject to council approval, contingent on a clean 21E and purchase and sale agreement, to hopefully make this a little bit more palatable for those that are concerned about the procedure going forward and how this will eventually go, make sure that we, you know, dot all of our i's, cross all of our t's, and do what's right for the community. So I would like to move this motion as amended, please.
I'll second the motion. The amendment, the amendment.
Yeah, you need to do that two different ways.
Okay, I'm amending the motion.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, discussion. Counsel, Mr. Town Manager, because I don't believe that.
Just because I'm a little unclear as to the amendment. So I guess, I think, first, the amendment, I understand the amendment in terms of the 21E part, getting the approval of the 21E part. In terms of the bill of sale, I'm going to have to, no matter what, bring you a bill of sale, a transfer of property is a separate kind of deal. I don't know what you mean by subject to a bill and sale. I can't, the bill and sale would be, what would happen is myself and the owner of the property, we go into negotiations, we would develop a bill of sale with no signatures. That has to, by charter, come back to town council for a vote, no matter what. So that doesn't need part of the motion, but if you're going to say it, then recognize that the bill of sale you're going to get is going to be a blank bill of sale, no contract, because it's just going to be something we agree on, and it's up to the council to ratify that.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that it's a little superfluous, but this, putting in that contingency wouldn't hinder the process of applying for the grant.
I just want to make sure you understand what you'd be getting. That's all I'm saying. If you want to do that, it's fine. I just want council members to know that one way or another, you're going to get that. And I want you to understand, you're going to get, you know, just the agreement between us, that would have to be ratified anyway. It might even have the owner of the property's signature on it, but it wouldn't have mine, because my signature wouldn't go on until after you guys voted to accept it.
Okay, so I'm under the impression, though, that the state wants this language.
So the state has approved the language the way it is. That's the way it's been approved. What you're adding is required by charter, so I don't know how they could really argue too much about it, to be honest with you. It's going to happen, if you vote to amend the motion or not, it has to by charter come back in the exact same way. In order for you to transfer land, you're not going to vote to transfer land without seeing the 21E anyway. So if you make it part of this motion, or you don't make it part of the motion, it's got to come back to town council for a vote regardless. So I'm not sure it really strengthens much here, because you're going to have to do that by charter. So it might make you feel better, but it's not going to change the reality.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Through you, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Town Manager, this is, this is the language that the state told us we had to have. So any changes, we should be requesting the state to approve that. Am I right? It's a yes or no question?
I do not disagree. I don't know how they would interpret any change of language. This is the language they reviewed and approved, so I don't know if they would accept it or not, depending upon what you change.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a first and a second on an amendment that we don't know if the state would approve anyway. And I'm just, I'm surprised at this. So I need to, I need to go to the ladies' room. I'm taking a 10-minute break. Recess. Okay, we are back in session. All right, so we're in the middle of debating the amendment, and what is the proper amendment that we want. So we had a first and a second, but then we had some discussion. The town manager has some concerns in regard to that. What do we want to do with it? Is there any other discussion on it? Because we will.
No, I, I think that the phrasing that we were going to go with was a subject to approval of the town council contingent on a clean 21E. I'm mutual toward the having the purchase and sale agreement, because that's understood anyway, but.
But for the first two?
Excuse me?
You're saying that you, so you're saying that you, you do or you don't want to also say the P and S, or you think that that's superfluous?
I don't know if it's really necessary, but because we have to get it anyway, but it's up to you. I don't.
Okay, I'll amend my amendment.
Withdraw your original and redo, please.
Withdraw my original.
You can just make it as a friendly, it's just a friendly amendment.
And that it's same place, right after Side Park. Subject to town council approval and a clean 21E environmental report.
Anything further on discussion of the amendment? Okay. Roll call on that.
Motion to amend. Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
No, because we, the state wants this.
Counselor DePietro.
Abstain.
Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Manna.
No, this is the state's wording, so no.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
So we have five yes, two no, one abstain.
So the motion has now been amended.
I have a second amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to propose amending the last sentence, as I mentioned earlier, to add, and shall, and shall be returned, shall be returned to that account if the grant is not approved by the state.
Second.
Just to clarify, just.
Doesn't, doesn't make sense.
Well, I'm concerned about, why I'm asking about that is that I'm concerned about the fact that the way the phrasing is here, it says, it says, "will be returned to the landfill royalty" once the grant funds are received. Okay? But that does, that does not really say that we will, it does not really say that we will not spend the money if we don't get the grant. Therefore, if we don't get the grant, I want to make sure that this money stays in the royalty account. So maybe we should say stays in the royalty account, rather than just return to the royalty account.
I think I have a solution for you, because now I think I understand your issue, right? So it's really not that the grant funds are received, you want to see that the reimbursement is received, is what you're saying. So when the reimbursement is received, because the problem with what you're suggesting is, there's no money ever going to be spent if we don't get the grant, period. There's no money that can be spent, because the project doesn't go forward. But what this is, should say, the monies will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the reimbursement from grant funds are received.
If I may, please. We're not taking the money out until we're starting the project. So the money won't get transferred unless we're getting that reimbursement anyway. So we don't have to worry about the money. You know, once we take it out, it's being used for this purpose. The only reason it's coming out of that account is if we get the grant and it's for this purpose. So it's, the question of being turned back in has nothing, because it only comes out to be used for the grant. So to have to say, if we don't get the grant, we put it back, we don't have to say that, because it only comes out if we get the grant. It's only used for the, for grant purposes. Do you know what I'm saying? So I believe you don't need to, if you want to, if there's anything clearing up in terms of returning it, then.
I mean, to be honest with you, I'm thinking about it in terms of, like, for example, and I know we brought this up earlier in the debate, previous versions of this debate, about the whole issue of the electric car, where we ended up spending the money and we didn't get the grant. And that's one of the reasons I'm thinking of this, because this is a significantly larger sum of money. And, I mean, I personally don't have a real objection to having the electric car, but we did specifically vote that we would not get it unless we got the grant money, and we got it anyway. So. And this is a much, much larger sum of money. So, that's just my concern.
Okay, so you were working on an amendment, and we didn't, or do we, do we move that amendment or not?
He did, right. He did, I seconded. It's removing the wording "will be," it's saying "shall," if I understand that correctly.
I'm actually adding to the end of it.
Okay.
Because it will be, it will, it does say "will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the grant funds are received," and.
And.
"Shall be returned to that account if the grant is not," or "shall."
But it won't ever come out if we don't get it. So you don't have to say "if we don't get it," because we're not taking it out unless we get it.
Exactly right.
Okay, okay.
It's going to sit there until we know we're getting it, then it'll get transferred to the Waterside Park account, and then it will be used.
Okay, okay.
The big concern I have likely serves whether it goes back, whether we get it back.
Exactly, I have that problem.
Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Quickly, just the electric car issue. When, when that came up, we needed a vehicle to be shared.
We're off topic here, though.
But he brought it up as far as the grant monies, but when we, when we discussed that publicly, there was a chance that we would get reimbursement for that grant, but we voted to spend the money, not anything like this. We didn't say we're going to buy this car only if we get a grant. We said, we're going to buy this car, it's green, it's going to help with our Green Communities Plan, and on top of that, we may get some reimbursement. And I think we did get the charger, correct, from the state? So we did actually, like $15,000 or something was the value of it.
I remember being in there, and I remember being very concerned about spending that extra money on there, so I agree with Counselor Steve's, actually.
Okay, so we're back to the amendment. We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion on, Counselor?
Well, if it's, honestly, if it's the understanding that that is what's going to happen, then I'll just rescind my, I'll just withdraw my amendment, if we don't need it.
So my original amendment?
So your original amendment?
Well, he had the second, so.
So we're back to the original. That passed.
All right. Okay, so we now have, as amended, is there any other amendments or considerations? Counselor Carrasco.
I asked to move the question.
Second.
Okay.
No.
So now, he's asked to move the question, now are you going to vote on moving the question again, which is non-debatable? So, roll call on moving the question. Let's roll call.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor DePietro.
Abstain.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Seven yes, one abstain.
So the motion carries. We will now vote on the main motion that's at hand.
As amended.
Which should be reread in its entirety. Vote to approve the park grant for the purchase and developing for recreational purposes of certain property known as Lot 2A as follows. That $335,674 is appropriated to purchase and develop for recreation purposes by a negotiated purchase or otherwise, a certain property known as Lot 2A, consisting of 1.3 acres, more or less, as shown on a plan entitled Plan of South Land in Southbridge, Mass. by Sherman and Friederke L.L.C., dated 7/10/2017, and that said land be conveyed to Southbridge under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 45, Section 3, and as it may hereafter be amended in other Massachusetts statutes relating to recreation to be managed and controlled by the Department of Public Works of Southbridge, maintained by Southbridge Associates, II LLC, once completed, and the town manager be authorized to file on behalf of Southbridge any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts deemed necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act 301 CMR 5.00, and/or any others in any way connected with the scope of this article and the town of Southbridge and the town manager's office be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any constructing a riverside park subject to town council approval and 21E, clarify, and a clean 21E, sorry, to have that clean word, and a clean 21E, that to meet this appropriation, $100,000 was previously appropriated in account number 6448 Waterside Park Matching Grant Funds on June 6, 2016, Agenda Item Number 18, and town council votes to appropriate $235,674 from account number 6790 Landfill Royalties Account to fund the remaining amount of this project. The monies will be returned to the landfill royalty account once the grant funds are received by the town. This is a majority roll call vote.
Ready, Madam Chair?
Pardon me?
Are you ready for the vote? Counsel, Counselor Clements.
No.
Counselor DePietro.
Abstain.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
Counselor Manna. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
So we have five yes, one no, two abstain.
All in favor? All adjourned. Merry Christmas, have a great holiday.